All right, good evening. It is January 22nd, 2024, 5 o'clock. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Bernie Independent School District to order. First thing we'll do is establish a quorum, and we have all board members present. We have Maritza Gonzalez Cooper, we have Jessica Davila, Garrett Wilson, Superintendent Dr. Kristen Kraft, I get to say that for the first time, myself, Carlin Fryer, Rich Senna, Kristy Schmidt, and Joe Tidwell. At this point in time, we're going to go into closed session for a number of reasons. The first is personnel, Section 551.071, .074, and .082, deliberation regarding matters related to employment, appointments, resignations, terminations, retirements, and reassignments. Second item is pursuant to Section 551.0821, which is personally identifiable information about a public school student. Third is discussed purchase, lease, exchange, or value of real property, which is Section 551.072, and then pursuant to Section 551.089, considering security assessments or deployments relating to information, resources, technology, network security information described by Government Code Section. And finally pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.076, considering the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. So it is now 5:04, and we will go into closed session. All right, good evening. It is 6:30, and I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Bernie Independent School District back to open session. It is 6:30 on January the 22nd. We still have a full quorum. We have Maritza Gonzalez Cooper, Jessica Davila, Garrett Wilson, Superintendent Dr. Kristen Kraft, myself, Carlin Fryer, Rich Senna, Kristy Schmidt, and Joe Tidwell. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Binway, and he will lead us with the pledge and commendation.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise, and gentlemen, please remove your caps for the presentation of colors by the award-winning Bernie champion JROTC color guard.
I please pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, please remain standing for a moment of silence and prayer. Please be seated. Mr. President, Board of Trustees, our students from Kendall have come up with some really great questions for our board members tonight. So ladies, take it away.
Hello, I am McKinsey. My question for you is, what made you decide to become a school board member?
Anybody want to take that one?
That's a, that's a very good question. I've been on the board for a while, and I really feel lucky that my parents, when I was a young kid, moved to a community, wasn't Bernie, with a really good school system. And so I had every advantage, but my parents were both raised in poverty. And I'm an immigrant family, and what got them ahead in life was a good education. And they were fortunate that they were able to go to schools that cared about their progress. And they always instilled in me, I'm really proud of my parents because they, they both went to college and finished college and got professional careers. And they always instilled in me and my siblings to give back to what we've been blessed with in America. We're very fortunate to be here. And so to me, serving the community and schools is extremely important. You can have good roads and good parks, but if you don't have good schools, you'll never be a great community. So it's imperative that we work hard to give you kids the best opportunity you can possibly have to have a good education and have a good future. So that's what motivates me. That's motivated me to serve.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Everly Roller, and I'm fifth grade. My question is, as a school board member, do you have to live within BISD boundaries?
I'll answer that one, and the answer is yes, you do. So you have to live within the district boundaries of the school district in order to run for school board.
Thank you.
Carlin, what's our miles? What are we, like 300 and...
364, 365 square miles.
It's a big district.
Hello, my name is Siri, and I'm a fifth grader at Kendall Elementary. My question is, do you have a job besides being on the school board of Bernie ISD?
So the, we'll tell you that being a board member is a non-paid position. So we are all volunteers. So yes, none of us have won the lottery yet, so we all still have jobs outside of the volunteer work that we do for the district, so.
And I'll add to that, there's the job that I have. I have a business that pays the bills, but the job, I don't even consider it a job. What I really love to do is, is this. It's more fun.
Hi, I'm Addie. Do you think that there might be a chance that Ag would be a part of our elementary campus?
I'll take that one. So as you know, we have the Ag barn that came through, and as you're probably aware, most of that at the beginning is through FFA projects, which are the high school level, but the plan for that is to get everything down to the elementary level. And you probably know, but if you don't, what is available right now is working through 4H and our county agent, Mr. Steven Zeller, and does amazing, amazing work. But in the future, the idea is to partner with that all the way down to the elementary school. And I know to date, while it's not full Ag programs, we have used that facility to take some elementary school kids out and introduce them to some of the agricultural concepts, but looking to do more and more of that as, as we go forward with that wonderful facility we have, that I won't ever miss an opportunity to thank the, everyone that helped us to get that going. That is not something that we, you know, we went out and purchased. That was donated through the Kendall County Fair. And anyway, so absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Haas, and I'm wondering how long a person can serve as a school board member?
Maritza, that's a Maritza question.
Great question. So it is not limited. And let's see, I'm my, as an example, I'm the oldest serving board member at this point, or longest serving board member. And someone else has the title of oldest. So I'm currently in my fourth term, and I'm up for, if I decide to run for election, reelection, it'll be next May. So it'll be a year from now.
But we serve a three-year term.
Three-year term.
Every three years. And I think today I learned history, one of our longest serving board members was 18 years, and then Alan Rich in this seat, 15 years.
Carol, Carol Matthews was 18 years, and Alan Rich was 15. Other than that, I, I don't know.
Good school project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. All right, we will move on to commendations. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Kraft, Board of Trustees, and our esteemed guests. If our board and Dr. Kraft can make their way down here for photos. This is my favorite part of our board meetings. This is where we get to honor the fantastic accomplishments of Bernie ISD students and staff. And tonight, we have a total of 15 commendations, and we're going to honor over 200 members of the Bernie ISD community. So you're going to get to see a great range of students and staff winning fantastic awards. And we ask that you stay until the end. We have a couple of great videos that also honor students as well. So we want to make sure that all of our students here tonight get to be honored in front of this great crowd. So our first commendation, please welcome our state Senator Donna Campbell. Senator Campbell, please come on up. Senator Campbell was instrumental in assisting BISD will open Viola Wilson Elementary on time. Senator Campbell worked with then Superintendent Dr. Price, along with then Chief of Operations Henry Acosta, to help negotiate with the San Antonio Water System to assure that there would be available water to begin construction on time. Without Senator Campbell's intervention, negotiations between BISD and SAWs would have been at a standstill. Thanks to her large role, Viola Wilson Elementary will open on time in August of 2024. So we thank Senator Campbell for that. Let's give her a hand for that. That was big as it is. And in her years as a state senator, she has honored many BISD students with official state proclamations to celebrate significant accomplishments. And we appreciate Senator Campbell coming all the way over from New Braunfels tonight to be honored here in Bernie. Let's give her a huge hand, Senator Donna Campbell. And Senator, for you, we have lots of great commendations to watch tonight, too. So we appreciate you being here. Our next commendation recognizes Champion Chargers standout athlete Elizabeth Leachman. Let's give her a big round of applause. This is not the first time we've honored Ms. Leachman in this room. In December, she took first place in the 2023 Girls Foot Locker Cross Country National Championship. That's a huge milestone. She finished the race in 16 minutes and 50 seconds at Balboa Park in San Diego, and she beat out the best athletes from across the country. Just a sophomore, Elizabeth has already won two individual state championships, taking home gold in 1600 meters in track and field last May, and winning the first championship in girls cross country for her in November. Just today, she was named the Gatorade Cross Country Player of the Year for Texas. And if her parents are, can you wave if your, if her parents and supporters are here? We want to make sure we thank you for your support. And let's hear it one big time for Elizabeth Leachman and all her accomplishments. And we'll see you in May when we celebrate your third state championship as well. Our next commendation celebrates the Bernie Greyhounds Cheer Team. Come on out, ladies. The Bernie Greyhounds Cheer Team won the 2024 UIL Class 4A Division 1 State Bronze Medal, third place in the entire state of Texas. The Greyhounds had a stellar performance in the morning at the UIL State Spirit Championships to qualify them for the finals later in the afternoon. In the finals, the Bernie Girls wowed the judges to place third in the state out of 53 teams in Class 4A Division 1. The Greyhounds' third-place finish is the best in school history. Let's hear it for the state bronze medalists, Bernie Greyhounds Cheer Squad. Can we have the parents and supporters of the Greyhounds raise your hands or stand up? We want to thank you for supporting the Bernie Greyhound State Bronze Medalists.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations again.
And we are sticking with the cheer squads because up next, we honor the Champion Chargers Cheer Team, who placed fourth at the state championships in Class 5A. Let's hear it for the Chargers. The Chargers Cheer Squad put on an amazing performance in the preliminary round to qualify them for the finals. In the final round, Champion performed incredibly well to place fourth in the state out of a total of 71 teams in Class 5A Division 1. The Chargers' fourth-place finish is the best in school history. Let's hear it for the Champion Chargers and their fourth-place finish at the State Spirit Championships. And can we have the parents of the Chargers, please raise your hands for your support? Thank y'all for being here to support the Champion Chargers. Great job, ladies. Go Greyhounds and go Chargers, two fantastic spirit teams that performed excellently this year for Bernie ISD. Our next commendation celebrates Bernie ISD student artists featured in the 2024 School Board Recognition Month calendar. Come on down, and let's give a big hand to our student artists for their artwork this year. Students from across the district participated in the art contest, with the winners selected after a review by campus and district administration. Each student selected to have their artwork featured in the calendar will receive four calendars for themselves to hand out. The student art contest winners from Bernie High School, Leila Shanley; from Champion High School, Piper Pruitt; Bernie Middle School North, Carrie Carlisle; Bernie Middle School South, Elizabeth Sedlak; Voss Middle School, Brooklyn Lee; Sibyllo Creek Elementary, Campbell Lind; Carrington, Cruz Salinas; Fabra, Catherine Ty; Fair Oaks Rants, Aziza Franklin; Hef, Archer Keller; Kendall, Kylie Garner; Van Rob, Luke Bernhard; the cover art, Isabella Garrett's Bernie High School; inside cover art, Brooke Gom, Voss Middle School. Let's hear it one more time for our student artists. And if you're a parent or supporter of these artists, could you raise your hands or stand up? We want to thank you for being here to support these fine students. And that's just one of the gifts that our board members are receiving tonight for School Board Recognition Month. One more time for our student artists for the calendar contest. Our next commendation is a young lady we've honored here before as well. Please welcome Bernie High School Junior Michaela Jones. Come on down, Michaela. Michaela was named champion in the category of drawing colored pencil at the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo Western Art Contest. Michaela was just one of 12 students from across the state who won a $10,000 scholarship for their artworks. In the contest, there were over 500 artworks judged, representing 54 Texas counties. Michaela's artwork will be exhibited at the Briscoe Western Art Museum in January, and then her artwork will be displayed at the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. Congratulations to Michaela Jones, champion in the Western Art Contest. And I know mom and dad are here. Could you wave? We want to thank you for your support as well. Our next commendation celebrates choir students Addison Grona, James Ace Peltier, and Sofia Colazo for earning a nationwide honor. Come on down. Addison, James, and Sofia were selected to the National Children's Youth and Chamber Choirs of the Organization of the American Cottley Educators Conference. The BISD students were selected from a field of national applicants and will perform at the OAKE National Conference in Chicago during spring break with artists from all around the country. This is a major accomplishment that will feature these students nationwide. Addison, James, and Sofia serve as great role models for their fellow students. Let's hear it for Addison Grona, James Ace Peltier, and Sofia Colazo. And can we have the parents and supporters of these students raise your hands? We want to thank you for supporting them and all their hard work as well. Congratulations. Our next commendation honors the Bernie Greyhounds Marching Band for earning an A in the School of Rock. Come on down, Greyhounds. The Greyhounds Marching Band tied for first place in the Metallica For Whom the Band Tolls competition. The band created performances incorporating Metallica's music into their show. Metallica's band members, in a nationwide fan vote, placed Bernie's performance as the best in the medium high school category from over 450 entries. With this historic nationwide victory, the Greyhounds Band earned $15,000 in instruments and equipment, along with media coverage from across the country. The Greyhound band members, directors, boosters, parents, and fans made history and made us proud. If you have not seen their video, it is on YouTube with Metallica's music. Let's give it up for the Bernie Greyhounds Marching Band. And they brought a selected few this evening because they said, we have a lot of band members, but let's bring our core group here tonight. Can we have the parents raise your hands if you support this group who, if you're here? Thank you for being here to support the Bernie Greyhounds Band. Our next commendation celebrates three Bernie ISD students who were selected to receive awards in the Bernie VFW Post 688 Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Contest. Let's hear it for our students who performed well in this contest. Joining us tonight from Bernie VFW Post 688 are Mr. Jason Spade, Mr. Robert Worrell, and Post 688 Commander Tony White, who will be handing out the scholarships. Champion High School Junior Piper Pruitt earned first place and received a $400 scholarship, while Bernie High School Juniors Palenopee Rouse and Savannah Watson took second and third place and received $300 and $200 scholarships respectively. Piper also won first place in the District 13 competition and will receive an additional $750 scholarship. She also advances to compete at the state level. The Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Program provides high school students with the opportunity to express themselves in regard to a democratic and patriotic-themed recorded essay. This year's theme was what are the greatest attributes of our democracy? More than 25,000 students across the state participate each year with over $2 million in scholarships awarded. Let's hear it for our campus coordinators as well, James Staples and Michelle Harris, and hear it for our Voice of Democracy Scholarship winners. Congratulations. And I have to point this out, Mr. Senna, our trustee, said, out of those 25,000 students that compete, more than 1,000 come out of Bernie. So that's a huge accomplishment for Bernie ISD. And if the parents and supporters of these fine folks here, could you raise your hands, too? Thank you very much for being here and supporting your students. Our next commendation honors Van Rob Assistant Principal Michael Juano, who was selected as the Region 20 Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. This award is given annually to 20 educators statewide for their outstanding service to TEPSA. Mr. Juano is in his third year as the Van Rob Assistant Principal. He began his career as an educator in 2008. As Van Rob's MTSS facilitator, Mr. Juano developed a refined referral and tracking process. To further strengthen Van Rob's bond with the community, Mr. Juano introduced the All Pro Dads Program on campus, and that is excelling with lots of members attending every night. So let's hear it for the Assistant Principal of the Year, Michael Juano. Our next commendation celebrates Bernie ISD coaches Tyson Stewart, Joey Cantu, Kristen Cantu, and Scott Slay for earning statewide and regional honors. Let's hear it for our Bernie ISD coaches. Greyhounds tennis coach Tyson Stewart was selected as the Texas Tennis Coaches Association State Coach of the Year. In Coach Stewart's first two seasons in Bernie, the Greyhounds earned a state silver medal, as well as individual state championships, and finished as a regional finalist. Chargers tennis coach Joey Cantu earned the Texas Tennis Coaches Association and Texas High School Coaches Association Region Coach of the Year, while Champion Assistant Coach Kristen Cantu was named the Region Coach of the Year by the Texas High School Coaches Association. With the Cantus at the helm, the Charger tennis teams have been highly successful, including earning the state bronze medal this past fall. Not with us tonight, but still being honored, Chargers water polo coach Scott Slay was the Texas High School Coaches Association Region Coach of the Year. In his first two seasons, or his first season, I'm sorry, he led the Chargers to their second straight water polo silver medal, and Bernie Greyhounds swim and Chargers swim are competing right now to go to state. Let's hear it for these amazing Bernie ISD Let's hear it for these amazing Bernie ISD coaches. Go Greyhounds and go Chargers. Thanks for all you do for our students. Our next commendation honors six Bernie ISD schools for earning statewide CREST Awards from the Texas School Counselor Association. Let's hear it for our Bernie ISD counselors. The Bernie ISD CREST Award winners are Bernie Middle School North, Bernie Middle School South, Voss Middle School, Carrington Elementary, Fabra Elementary, and Kendall Elementary. In 2005, the Texas School Counselor Association began a program called CREST to recognize schools with outstanding counseling programs. Schools receiving CREST awards have demonstrated a commitment to using the Texas model to improve the lives and achievement of students in academic, career, and personal social domains. Congratulations to our six Bernie ISD CREST winners, a statewide honor. Let's hear it one more time for our great counselors. Congratulations, thank you very much for being here and doing a great job for our students. Our final commendation tonight celebrates Bernie ISD mentors. Let's give a big hand to all of our mentors that are here tonight as they do a fantastic job for Bernie ISD students. Let's hear it for our mentors. The Bernie ISD Mentor Program pairs adult mentors with students from across the district. Mentors devote their time and make a commitment of at least one year to mentoring. Along with Bernie ISD mentors, we have a partnership with Hill Country Daily Bread, the Stand By Me Mentor Program. Through this partnership, there are 28 mentors serving elementary and middle school students. Overall, over 40 mentors serve district students. Let's have a big hand for the difference that our mentors make in Bernie ISD. Thank you to our mentors. We appreciate your hard work. And as we've mentioned already once tonight, it is School Board Recognition Month in January, and tonight we have some great recognition gifts for our Board of Trustees. We want to give a special reference to the Bernie and Champion Art Programs as they provided special gifts for our Board of Trustees. And now I'd like Dr. Kraft to talk a bit more about our board, and we have a special surprise for our trustees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Benway. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for making it out to the meeting this evening. I'm thinking about this question one of our students asked. One of our students who led the pledge asked about their jobs, about what it takes to be a member of the Board of Trustees, and you heard the passion from our trustees and you heard what drives them. And I just want to say thank you to my new team for your dedication, your commitment. I know our time together has been very short, as this is my fourth week, but I am so impressed, and I have been impressed from the very first day when I was able to meet you and hear all about Bernie ISD and see your commitment to students and the community play out day after day. And I want to say thank you on behalf of all of the Bernie employees and our students and families for the role that you play in making sure that Bernie is a stellar destination district for all of our families for years to come. So thank you. And with that, we have a special surprise for you. So turn to the screens.
January is School Board Recognition Month. Bernie ISD is proud to honor our hard-working trustees.
Hello, I am Lieutenant Karen Kaya. All one, can please turn off your cell phones as our BISD school board meeting is about to begin.
Buenos dias, my name is Maritza Gonzalez-Cubot. As a parent, I believe every child deserves an opportunity to receive an excellent education in a safe learning environment.
Hello, everyone. I am Jessica Dobula. BISD is an excellent school district. Like many of our school board members here tonight, I have a daughter who graduated Champion High School and another daughter who will be graduating from Champion in just a few years. So I love supporting our Chargers. Go Champion Chargers.
Hi, I'm Garrett Wilson. I'm the Board Vice President. We are blessed to live in a district where parents, teachers, administrative staff, churches, and businesses are enthusiastic about supporting our children every day.
Good evening. I'm Colin Fire. I'm your Board President. As a lifelong area resident, my hope is that I can provide perspective and leadership to the district so that current and future students have great opportunities while the district continues to evolve through rapid growth.
Hello, I am Rich Senna. Providing a strong education is the most important thing that a community can do. I want future generations of Bernie ISD to have the same excellent experience that my children had.
Hello, I'm Kristy Schmidt. Bernie ISD has the best students, teachers, staff, and superintendent in the state of Texas. We are blessed to have such a great school district in our community.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jotillo. I'm your Board Secretary. Together, we have a great opportunity to make Bernie ISD even better than it is today, but we must focus on maintaining what made it great in the first place. As a Bernie High School graduate, I look forward to seeing you at the football games, and I hope you hear me yelling loud and proud, "Go Greyhounds!"
It's a new year, so let's get ready for a new chapter of Bernie ISD.
Thank you to our board members for all they do for our students, like me, staff, and community.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you!
Thank you for caring about us.
Thank you.
Happy School Board Recognition Month!
Thank you for all you do. Go Greyhounds! Go Chargers!
So that was a surprise to our board members. And if you recognize, we have some board members' children that are in that video. So thank you all for keeping a secret for so long. For the students that were in this video that are here, would you please come on up and we can get a picture with you and our board members? All of our students that are here that performed in the video, we'd love to get a photo of y'all and your doppelgangers. Can we also have, if you're a parent of one of the students that we just saw, could you please raise your hand? Because you really helped us out tremendously in getting them to play their roles. So thank you very much. Happy School Board Recognition Month. And please don't go anywhere because we have a couple of great videos that we're going to play next. We want you to honor our students. So, Mr. President, I yield the floor back to you, sir.
Hi, Senna, I expect you to stay till the end of the meeting.
Give Mr. Senna just a second to return. Mr. Benway, do you want to introduce Character Counts? Or do you want me to do that?
Sir, whatever works for you. Okay, our next presentation is Character Counts, and this is a monthly segment that we've been doing here in Bernie ISD to show collaboration between the district and community partners. So please welcome Rotary of Bernie and Bernie Sunrise Rotary Club up to the dais, and they will talk about the great partnership that Bernie ISD has with our local Rotary Clubs.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Kraft, President Pryor, board members. I have to say, after looking at that video, you all never looked better. I'm the president of the Bernie Noontime Rotary Club here, and we're here today with the Sunrise Rotary Club, and we have three members who are going to be presenting some of the things that we do in conjunction with BISD. We also want to thank Jennifer Eskamia, the principal at Kendall Elementary, and Troy Ladiolis, the principal at Fabra. First one who will be here tonight is Naomi Genrich. She is our faculty sponsor for Early Act, and she'll be talking a little bit about that at Fabra. She is also our fundraising chair of our Noontime Rotary Club. She did bring some flyers about our fundraiser that helps fund all these programs that we sponsor. Also, we have Charles Kerlik Chah. Chah is the, he's the lane chair for the youth at the Sunrise Club. He's also a past president of Sunrise Club and a retired master of the Winston School down in San Antonio. Ruben Cardness is also a past president of the Noontime Club, and he is also the lane chair for the youth. And there, he's going to be the first one to present tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, board members and superintendent. Nice to meet all of you tonight. Our club has, over through the years, been involved as much with youth as we possibly can. And one of the things that we do, of course, is our youth exchange program. But the main thing that we try to do is get, is try to build character in the kids that you all have already molded. Obviously, we have our first night program, which currently we only have at Kendall Elementary, and that basically rewards the students by their recommendation from their teachers for exemploring character. Students receive medals at a nighting ceremony. We usually have about five per school year. And here is a photo of one of the ones that we do. And the fifth graders, I believe, at this point are the only ones that actually go through the entire nighting process, where they actually kneel, and Lady Amber presents them with an actual nighting ceremony. If y'all have never joined us, please do. Principals at Kendall have always been very receptive and very helpful, and we appreciate them very much because without their help and their input, there's no way that this project could ever even exist. And so, thank you all for that.
All right, so I'm Naomi Genrich. I currently teach special ed at Fabra, and I'm also part of the Friday Club and, yes, part of their casino night fundraisers. So Joe's got flyers for all of you. So anyway, the goal with Early Act at Fabra is to get kids to think about others before themselves. That's the end goal. Currently, we have about 25 members. Rich and Chah here come on Mondays. We had our meeting today, actually, and Lee Owen is also a sponsor from one of the clubs that comes. Some of the things that we've done is go to nursing homes. We sang at a nursing home for Christmas. Today, we made Valentine's Day cards for the elderly here in Bernie. Let's see, we're also, we've done, collected shoes for Good for the Soul. So over Thanksgiving, we collected over 150 pair of shoes, and that was all donated from students at the school. We are going to do a mac and cheese drive for Hill Country Daily Bread, a Hill Country Blessings in a Backpack. Next is Hill Country Daily Bread, where we're going to take the families and the kids out there and partner with them and just get the kids and the families involved. But the goal is just to get the kids to think about others before themselves, and they actually do a really good job. We had a planning session where they wrote down anything and everything they wanted to do, and their resources are unlimited. And they're, they're just, their minds are just limitless. Like, they could just go and go and go. So I'm really impressed, and I thank Troy Ladiolis for letting me bring it in. We do have, we are starting our recycling program, which Troy does not know about yet. But we are, one of the kids, kids want to do recycling programs, so we're working on getting buckets for each classroom, and the kids will have teams on Fridays that will go around and pick up buckets. But overall, we had waste management come and talk to the kids, and it would save, just by recycling, over 20,000 gallons of water. That's what it takes.
It's Naomi, and thanks for the opportunity for us to come and speak about the Rotary programs that we do have in Bernie. Naomi spoke about the Early Act program, which is basically for elementary school students. And then we move into Interact, which can be for middle school as well as high school. Currently, we have two Interact programs that turn, one at Champion and one at Bernie High School. And basically, Interact fosters leadership and responsible citizenship and promotes international understanding. They basically have two major projects during the year. They want to do something locally, as well as they want to do something internationally to have a better understanding. Another part of our program for juniors at high school is called RILAS, called Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. Basically, what it is, is a very, how do I want to say? Intense leadership program that is conducted over Martin Luther King holiday, over that four-day period from a Friday to a Monday, and the kids learn a lot about leadership. Some of the kids who I've seen go to the program over the years maybe were somewhat tentative and going, a little shy, that sort of thing. It was difficult for, maybe for them to step outside their comfort zone. But going through that program has brought out the skills that they have, and that's what Rotary do, Rotary can do, as well as help support what you do each day in terms of supporting the mission for the school district. We also, both of our clubs offer scholarships. The Noon Club offers four $1,500 scholarships. And our club, the Bernie Sunrise Rotary Club, we offer six scholarships for $1,000, and it can be either from Bernie High School or Champion High School as well. And some of the things that we've done locally, one of the things that Naomi had mentioned was Blessings in a Backpack, Hill Country Daily Bread. We also, our clubs have sponsored Scouts. My Rotary Club sponsors Troop 18 at St. Peter's, and the Noon Club sponsors a pack, a Cub Scout Pack 102 meets at the Methodist Church. I'm also a scout leader in that group, and I want to thank them for doing that because there has unfortunately been some issues with Scouts, and they've had to change their charters. But we stepped up, and we wanted to make sure that that program's available to our kids in the community as well. Ruben talked about Rotary Youth Exchange. That's one thing that I will mention is that this is an opportunity for students to go abroad for a full year. They have a full-year program or a short program in the summer. And unfortunately, with COVID and some of the things that have gone on in the world, we have not an opportunity to really attract kids for that. We will try to work towards that because it is a good opportunity, and kids in Bernie have participated in the past. So that's a great program. And also, I want to thank Rich Senna. He's in our club, and you know, he doesn't do very much at all, especially, he's not very interested in kids either. very interested in kids either. So, I wanted to give him a plug because he is a great board member. He's also a good friend in our Rotary Club, and I want to thank the opportunity for being here this evening to share what we can do. And one of our goals, I think, would be to have an Early Act Club in every elementary school, and we can help facilitate that if there's those principals that would like to do that. So, thank you very much. Thanks for your time, and thanks for what you do for the school district.
You know, I'm going to, before you, before you leave or hit your seats, I want to say thank you. Obviously, it takes a village sometimes to surround our students with the support they need to be successful in the schools, and you certainly go above and beyond in doing that. And we appreciate the collaboration and the working relationship very much. So, thank you again.
You know, and Chah, you thought you retired from being involved with kids, but you are way involved, both at a regional level and within Bernie. And I will say this much, I would love to see us expand Early Act to all of our elementary schools, and there is no better model than what is going on at Fabra. Naomi, you have done an outs, over the top outstanding job in being the sponsor of that group. It is student-led. I mean, they run the meetings, they organize the meetings, they develop the agenda, they have some coaching, but it's great to see young fifth graders and younger learning leadership skills because this is an important part of life. And Naomi volunteered to do this at the beginning of the year, and has really just jumped into it. A-plus.
Thank you. All right. Brian, we'll now move on to the highlight video.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Craft, our Bernie ISD highlights tonight feature a brand-new BEF Wow! moment, which we will take you inside one of our campuses, and then our January Student Limelight Award recipient, who is here tonight to be honored as well. So, here are the Bernie ISD video highlights.
Hi, my name is Grayson, and welcome to Bernie Middle School South. Today's Wow! moment will be in the South Library with Ms. Millendorf and Ms. Fitz, where the students are using the Ozo Vots to review content from the semester, including for semester.
There's a certain distance, and then we have to do the triangle.
So, we got to recreate this. See if you've got a hunk of it.
Thank you for supporting every student, every teacher, and every school in Bernie ISD.
Mac Morose is an eighth grader at Bernie Middle School North. He's an outstanding student leader who excels academically and in extracurricular activities. Mac is president of the student council and a proud member of the BMSN Honors Band, where he plays the French horn. In addition, Mac plays football, lacrosse, and soccer. Mac is the youngest of six siblings. At five years old, Mac was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes and is very passionate about serving as an ambassador for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. Mac's teachers and coaches all say he is a positive student with outstanding work ethic and is always willing to help his peers who need assistance in the classroom or athletics. Mac is the consummate teammate and brings out the best in his peers. He's a natural leader, both verbally and physically. He is always respectful, caring, hardworking, and a young man that any coach would love to have in their program. We would like to thank Mac for being an awesome greyhound at Bernie Middle School North.
The Limelight is sponsored by HEB. Thank you for supporting students and teachers in Bernie ISD.
Let's hear it for Mac. Great job, Mac! And before we invite Mac up, I want to give a couple of quick thanks. Mr. Owen, who did the voiceover, the North principal, great job. And can we give a hand to Mac's family? Mom and dad are here tonight. Thank you very much. And so, now, Mac, the floor is yours. Let's hear it up for Mac Morose, our Student Limelight for January. And I think, I think, Mac, the board has a couple of questions that they'd like to ask you.
I do. Go ahead.
Mac, you are involved in so many things. How do you find time to do all this?
I guess it's just finding, scheduling it out, making sure you get a good sleep first, and then hiding your way through the day. But that's usually how my days go, just spreading it out evenly and trying to get through.
Well, it's impressive.
Very impressive. Tell me about lacrosse. Where do you play, and how many of your friends play lacrosse?
So, our county has a little program, and it gives students and other people in the county to play. And so, I go there, and that's where I play. I have a couple of friends that do play there, but it's mostly just me. There's a, there's a big group of people from different schools, and we all just play together.
So, I don't, I don't know if you remember, Mac, but I've actually been your substitute teacher before over at North. You remember? So, Mr. Owen was right. I pegged you out from the very beginning. You're a born leader. All the students at North look up to you. It's very obvious. So, just want to thank you for being a good influence. And also, I know you don't play basketball, but don't you do something for the basketball team over there, too?
Yes, ma'am. I'm manager for it. So, make sure they get their water and all the plays a little bit.
Thank you.
Well, thank, thanks for all you do. You're a busy guy, but thank you very much.
And those banners. I mean, come on!
Very good.
Anybody else have any questions for Mac? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations, Mac. Thank y'all for being here. Mr. President, I yield the floor back to you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Next item on our agenda is visitor comments and testimonials, and we did not have anyone sign up to speak tonight, so we will move past that. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes in the agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. All right. Agenda is approved. Next item is to consider action, if any, regarding items discussed in closed session, and there were no items in closed session that are going to be pulled out separately. The next item would be our consent agenda. Anyone have any questions about the consent agenda or want to pull anything?
Mr. President, I just wanted us to maybe have a brief discussion or an explanation of item I, which is considering the approval of the affidavit to the public for the Kendall County Fire EMS station. We have with us tonight County Commissioner Richard Chapman, whose precinct it is where the EMS station and the sheriff's substation is going to go. And perhaps he'd like to talk to us a little bit about the process and the collaboration between the school district and the county.
Commissioner Chapman, thank you for being here.
Thank y'all for having me here. This is an exciting time. After a year and a half of planning and hundreds of hours of meetings, we have come up with a contractor. We've left the bid, and we are fixing to break ground very soon. I hope to invite this entire board to the groundbreaking ceremony. I'm excited because this is a collaboration between two entities that has done nothing but save the taxpayers' money. We're providing in the, one of the most, if, I guess, the most remote school in the county, an onsite EMS facility, as well as a sheriff's substation. The intentions right now are to man the sheriff's substation with a constant crew that will report to that substation all times. They will not come into the sheriff's office, where most of them report now. They will report to that area. They will work out of that area. They will leave from that area. So, y'all will have a constant presence of law enforcement on this site, which I think is a win-win for the school district, as well as you will have an EMS station even closer to you. You have one now that is relatively close. This will move it even close. For the county residents, we got the land, which is a huge cost these days, as everybody knows, or $10 for 50 years, or so essentially nothing. And I really appreciate that. To, just to be able to work with the school district has been a pleasure. I would, I can't name everybody. I just want to say thank you to all the school board members and all the staff as well that have, that have worked to make this happen and finally come to, to life. So, very soon, y'all will be seeing some work out there, and I hope to make y'all proud with the building and the people that we put out there. So, as far as the agenda item, since y'all are the landowners, and this is going to be a, have a commercial septic system on it, the county requires, as part of their rules, that you actually maintain it with a commercial operator of some kind. Has to have a contract so that it never fails. So, in event that we ever leave the site or y'all kick us out, which I don't look to see that happening, but in case it were to be, y'all are just signing that y'all will maintain and make sure that there is a service contract on the septic system. We, we treat ourselves just like we treat our constituents. We make our constituents do this, and all the businesses that come to us, so we follow our own rules as well. So, that's why we're asking y'all, as the owners of the land itself, to sign this affidavit for us. And that is all in the world it is. We maintain it. Y'all have no responsibility whatsoever. And so, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I thank y'all deeply for all of the support that you've given the county to make this happen.
No, no questions. Just, I know, Richard, this has been a goal of yours as the commissioner for many, many years, and it's great that it's being brought to fruition. Every one of our other campuses is within three minutes of a sheriff's station or a police station, whether it's Middle School South, Kendall, Carrington, Bernie High School, you name it, as well as Fair Oaks Ranch, you know, Van Robben, Fair Oaks. And now, as you mentioned, our most remote campus will now have on its site Sheriff's Substation EMS. And to us, that's huge. That helps protect our kids, but it also protects the area, which is a growing part of the county. So, thank you for your leadership on it. And knowing you, Richard, it will definitely come in, in on budget. I know.
We actually came in a few hundred thousand under budget. We beat up the poor architects so bad that I actually felt bad of them. But yes, we have come in so far under budget, and I plan on keeping it that way. But I, I did figure out something tonight, and I learned something, besides all of the great kids that y'all have honored tonight, I learned something that Mr. Senna and I have in common. And he has given me a hard time over the years of being, I'm not going to say the, the oldest on my board, but certainly the most, having the most life experiences. And tonight, I learned that Mr. Senna has the same distinct honor of having the most life experiences on this board. So, yeah. So, thank y'all again, and please reach out to me if I can do anything for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You, you use the words that I used earlier with the Rotary Clubs, and it's the collaboration between entities that, that is one of the things that separates our community from a, from a number of other communities. And we're just, we're appreciative of, of your dedication and helping us get that accomplished. And the other person I'd like to recognize in this is Mark Stoll. Mark is our chief of operations and worked very closely with the county to get all this taken care of through our facilities side. So, thank you, Mark. With that, I don't think we've had a motion yet for the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Now, move on to governance and go to board member reports. Marissa, I'll start with you.
With Bernie Education Foundation, we had some really great news. We had our purse mania the first Thursday of December, and came up with the total numbers after paying everything. And wow, was it impressive. We had kind of just a net, after everything paid, of $59,000 from purses and women just, you know, participating in this. So, wow. So, thank you to the community, all of the businesses that help support BF. As y'all know, just a reminder, every dollar stays here with the district and comes back to our kids to every school. So, thank y'all for that. Another quick just reminder, we have Rock On on the calendar, and that's our big fundraiser. And that is scheduled for Saturday, March 23rd. So, mark your calendars and make sure you set that aside.
Garrett?
Yeah. So, we had a, we did have a finance committee meeting, and as always, we had a lot of good things that came out of that. I believe Mr. Scott has a budget amendment that he's going to show tonight. We went over that, and one thing I wanted to bring out is that similar to last year, we, we did budget for a deficit. And what this budget amendment does is it, it increases that deficit. But I think it's important to remember that a lot of the expenses that are going into this calendar year, which then contribute to that deficit and, and make it that way, were, were funding those expenses with the surplus that happened last year. So, we, we budgeted for a slight deficit last year and ended up with a fairly significant surplus. But that surplus stays on the books last year. We took that, those funds from the surplus of last year and then applied those to some extra, especially one-time expenses that we wanted to get in this year. So, those go on as expenses this year, but we don't get to realize them as revenue this year. So, I just want to point that out. I think it's, it's just good to talk about that, just so everybody's on the same page and, you know, you know, things, the deficit's really not as bad as, you know, it would look there from what we're showing. We also talked about debt management. We've got, you know, more good news there as far as the way we've structured these, the 2022 bond sales. We've saved about $18 million in interest so far, and so, that's, that's great news. You know, another thing is the way, the way we're doing that with these variable rate debt obligations, we've got a, a policy that we will only have 30% of, or less of those, and the rest we fixed rate. I think it's important to note, too, that it's, it's good to have those on our books because they're, they're much more callable than, than, you know, most of the bond, bonds that we issue. And so, that being the case, when we have extra funds left over, which, which we do, we have 19 million or so this year that we're going to have to pay off debt early, then we have a place for those funds to go. And so, that $18 million in savings is a direct result of being able to pay that debt off early, which we're, we're proactively doing. And I think that's, I think that's a good thing to point out as well. As far as our investment report for the general fund and the debt, the capital projects fund, those, you know, we're still enjoying the high interest rates in, on the short-term end of the yield curve. It was something like 5.5% is what we're earning on those. The, the duration on those, I think we calculated like 50 or 60 days, but also, I think it's important to note, note that really, those are effectively one-day durations. So, if we needed to gain access to those funds, we would have pretty much all of that immediately, which is good. I think that's a really responsible way to handle our liquidity from the financial standpoint. We also talked about school health and related services issue, that the reimbursements through the state of Texas, that the, the federal government gives us through the state of Texas, they went back and recalculated some of those. And so, there's a discrepancy with, with all school districts in the state of Texas about how much money we're going to get back on, on, from, from those funds. We do have, we are fighting that right now. And I think, you know, I think we have a good case to make. They've, they've kind of, you know, done some things there that I don't think makes sense. But, and so, that was, that was pretty much everything we talked about in the finance meeting. And it's a good meeting. Looking forward to the finance report later, as always.
You know, just one thing I'd add. By the end of this year, we'll still have in the range of 2.9 to three months of fund balance, and our auditors require or recommend strongly that we have anywhere from two to three months. So, we're in very good shape with that. We've built it up over the years, and that helps us with our, with our ratings on our, on our, our bonds. So, it saves us money to be, to have a good savings account, if you will.
Anything else, Garrett? All right, Mr. Senna?
Okay. I don't have much of a report, but I am, I do want to introduce, I will say, I had a very entertaining hour and a half meeting with a senior aide to the governor on educational policy and school finance and goals for the next legislative session. And I said, if you ever want, you know, input from a good school district, please feel free to call us. And so I, I hope that bears some fruit down the road because we were four out of five on our legislative priorities this year. But the big one, the basic allotment and school funding didn't pass. So that's something that has to be addressed in the next session. But we have with us tonight, the State Board of Education member that represents Bernie and Kendall County District 10, that's Tom Maynard. He's with us tonight. And Maritza, you've been on the board. This is your 11th year. This is my 10th year. I don't ever recall a State Board of Ed rep coming to visit us, but Tom wanted to share with us legislative updates and some of the things that happened in the last session and how it impacts. Tom's background, just a little bit, back in the day, he was an ag teacher at Bandera High School. Is that right, Tom? He is a farmer now. He raises, is it lambs?
Oh, not goats.
Goats. Goats. Okay. And he's visited the ag programs at both Bernie and Champion. So I just want to introduce our State Board of Ed rep, Tom Maynard.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. All right.
Mr. Maynard, we appreciate you being here. Mr. Senna says you've got about seven or eight minutes worth of slides for us and we appreciate that.
Something like that. And then can I advance him? I've got a clicker. Oh, here we go. All right. So, well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's been my honor to, to serve on the State Board of Education, a little over 11 years now. Just, just a notation that the, that the pay scale, the State Board of Education is the same as yours. And so it is, it is a volunteer job, but it is, it is great work. I had the opportunity to serve for, for six years on the, on the Florence ISD Board of Trustees. And so, you know, bless you for what you do. Thank you for that. Well, just, just, just a notation, I, and people ask you like, well, why in the world did you, did you ever go into, into education? I didn't go to college to, to go into education. I, I went into college to pursue a degree in the animal science department at, at Texas Tech and had kind of had one of those kind of burning bush moments, if you know what I mean. And, and had the opportunity, I was elected as a, as a state FFA officer and they had, they had the opportunity to work with young people all across the state of Texas. And, you know, my background is, is that I grew up in a place called Cal Farley's Boys Ranch. I was a Boys Ranch kid that was sent, I was a disadvantaged kid. And I spent seven years at the Cal Farley's Boys Ranch northwest of Amarillo. And I was, I was blessed to, to have people surrounding me that underscored the, the notion that circumstance is not destiny. And, and your educators and work with young people all the time that are certainly dealing with a lot of circumstances and, you know, the, the, the framers of the 1876 Constitution understood that. When they created Article 7 of the, of the Texas Constitution, they understood that education was the, the great leveler. Well, I wanted just to kind of bring you some, bring you up to date with a few things. And first of all, by the way, is, is that I haven't always represented Kendall County. I picked that up in redistricting and you can kind of see, and if you can look on your map there, you can see District 10. I, you know, it's, it's 27 counties. And so, you know, last week I was actually in Palestine. That's in my district. Earlier this week, I was in, I was in Mason. That's in my district. Tomorrow I will be in, I'll be in, in Washington County. And so our districts are very, very large. And so we have lots to do. I think it's always good to, to, to kind of point out that we are not a, we're not a legislative body. We're a rulemaking body. We're part of the executive branch. And the reason that's important to remember, you know, people, you know, email us all the time and then they, they give us a laundry list of things. Well, why don't you fix this or why don't you fix that? And the reality is, is the only way that the State Board of Education can actually act is if we have a legislative mandate to do so. And so I think that you're, you're probably, you know, familiar with a lot of these things. And I'm going to touch on a few of these things tonight, but things like instructional materials, the permanent school fund, we're going to talk about that just briefly, credentialing, new charter schools. And then of course, we're going to talk about library collection standards. Just a notation, the, the Chair of the State Board, we have a new chair, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Kinsey was appointed by the governor to, to do that. That was the appointment the governor could make without disrupting the committee structure of the board. I currently serve as Chairman of School Finance and I'm Chairman of the Permanent School Fund Corporation. I will tell you that the, the Chair of the State Board is, is the only position in, in, in state government where you have to be elected from a district, appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Senate. And that's a, that's a, that is a absolute gauntlet. So I want to just, just touch briefly, and I, I believe that the Honorable Rich Senna has, has some copies of this, the rule text. And I know that the Reader Act and HB 900 has been certainly a, a big hot topic concerning library content. And so I will say this, is that if you saw the headlines, there's that part of the Reader Act was challenged in court and was overturned by the Fifth Circuit. I understand is, is that that does not affect the library collection standards. What was challenged was the, the bill directs the book sellers to rate books. That was the only piece of that that was challenged. And so the library collection rules remain intact. The State Board of Education and the, and the Texas State Library and Archives Commission was, were both dismissed from the case. What it, what kind of happened with this is in, and back prior to House Bill 900, you see what the language said is the, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission in consultation with the State Board of Education shall adopt standards for school library services. That's very unusual language. Is it, what does it mean to, to do something in consultation with? We have no idea what that means. Sent us an email. I don't know. What, what does that mean exactly? You know, you contrast that to our relationship with ESPEC. You know, ESPEC has to send our, you know, materials over and we have the opportunity to opine on those things and to possibly veto those things. So this is what, if you take a look at it now, what 900 did is, is it essentially gave to the State Board of Education, the elected state board, the opportunity then to opine on that and to, to approve that. And I, and I think that, and you should have a copy of these things. I'm gonna hit the, just hit the, the highlights. But you can kind of see some of these things is that, that, that really address and understand, remember what the Reader Act is. And that is you restricting explicit and adult designated educational resources. That's, that's the Reader Act. It's actually an acronym. And so, so this is specifically aimed at sexually explicit materials. And so it, what the, what the rule does is that it, and then what the legislation does is it essentially, you know, codifies a lot of this, recognizes that parents are the primary decision makers in, in terms of access, it, in terms of prohibiting possession, acquisition and purchase of harmful materials. It recognizes that obscene content is not protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution. I think that for, for many years, the, you know, a lot of school boards have, have struggled with this, but what this does is this gives local school boards a little bit of cover because now that the legislature has, has acted on that, I know a lot of school boards have, have attempted to do certain things and have, have been challenged. The other thing I want to kind of land around a little bit about is, is House Bill 1605. How many of you have been following 1605? That might be, it might be the biggest piece of legislation related to instructional materials possibly ever passed. And a couple of things that's worth noting is, is that, you know, prior to, to 2011, some of you remember the old days when, when the, the state essentially purchased everything and we had the conforming and non-conforming list and the, the state bought everything and sent it out to the schools. Well, 2011, all of that changed with SB, SB 6. And what that essentially did is, is that, well, we're not doing that. It's, is that we're, we're still going to have a process, but local school boards or school districts can make their own decisions and they're not necessarily limited by that. And so, so we did retain the process, but what's happened is, is that you look here is, is that, you know, a lot of the material that is currently being used in school districts has not been through the State Board of Education process. And I guess, you know, the question is, well, what is the consequence of that? And there are some consequences to that. And that is, is that, that a lot of that material is, is not high quality. And just in terms of, of how it's constructed. And one of the things that's really important is, is that, you know, reading is, is so central to education. And the thing is, is that a lot of that material is not on gray level, not on gray level. And so we have to be reading on gray level across the curriculum. And, and so what, what it's, what, what this legislation does, what 1605 does is essentially marries two processes together, the State Board of Education and the commissioner's process of determining what is high quality material, puts those things together and essentially elevates it. The process, what it does is it essentially changes the filter going through our process. Now, this thing does not necessarily erode local control. That doesn't mean that, that Bernie ISD has to purchase that. However, there is a financial incentive to do so, is, is that you will get on, on top of your regular allotment, an additional $40 per student if you are using materials that have been through this new process. In addition to that, if it has been vetted, it is, if it's open source material that has been through our process and you're printing it yourself, you get an additional $20 a student. And so there's a financial incentive to do that. At the end of the day, it is still up, up to you to, whether or not you want to pursue that. Just a few things that I think are just important to note, in addition to the instructional materials review and adoption process, the legislation also directs the State Board of Education to create vocabulary lists. Now historically, you know, when we, when we put together instructional standards, the State Board of Education is actually prohibited from doing anything related to instructional time or instructional methodology. And historically, vocabulary lists have been deemed to be methodology. Well, this essentially directs us to create lists as part of that attix, part of the attix process. The other thing it does is it also directs us to create reading lists. Reading lists have been very controversial. And so the last thing is, is that also that the, the parent portal and to make sure that parents have complete access to see what is there. Last thing I want to just kind of land around and then Rich, I guess we can ask questions. Is that right? All right. So Permanent School Fund, a lot of people have no idea that the Permanent School Fund even exists. It is actually, you know, one of the great treasures of Texas. It is the $54 billion Endowment Fund that, that supports public education. It also includes all of the, the land assets that are managed by the School Land Board over at the General Land Office. Three things that, that Permanent School Fund does, first of all, your instructional materials allotment and instructional, instructional materials and technology allotment comes from that distribution. There's also a per capita distribution and of course, the bond guarantee program. And when you pass a school district bond, the, when, when the Permanent School Fund guarantees that bond, it becomes a AAA and we are saving taxpayers $300 million every year. We just, some of you remember, we had a bit of an issue with the bond guarantee program. And we actually ran out of, out of capacity. I spent the last three years fighting the IRS. Isn't that fun? And what, what it was is that when we passed this, this program back in 1983, almost immediately, the IRS placed that under the arbitrage regulations and limited our capacity based on evaluation of the fund rather than allowing state law to, to govern those things. And what had happened was, is that the, the IRS had limited our capacity based on a 2009 valuation of the fund and refused to move it. And we, we had to spend a lot of time getting the members of the Texas delegation on board to try to get us exempted from that. Eventually, we finally cornered the IRS commissioner earlier in the spring. He cried uncle. And they have, have decided to pull out and allow state law to, to govern that rather than the IRS regulations. And so now it is controlled strictly by state law. The other thing I think is just worth noting is, is that we, we have made the biggest change in the governance of the fund probably in its history. You know, back in 1876, the, the Constitution gave care of, of the Permanent School Fund to the State Board of Education and not the legislature. Can you imagine why? Because they didn't trust the legislature. And, but very recently, the, we, we formed the Permanent School Fund Corporation. And essentially what that did is, is that pulled it out from underneath the, the TEA umbrella and allowed us to create a governmental corporation. There's several reasons for that. You know, first of all is, is that what it also did is it, it put together the assets that we were managing together with the assets that were being managed by the School Land Board. What happened was, is that back in the early 2000s, the, the legislature allowed the School Land Board to create a, a portfolio of their own. But because of how those things are operate in private equity and real estate, those guys were sitting on $4 billion of uninvested cash. And let me just say that again, $4 billion of uninvested cash. It was literally costing us $200 million for those guys to sit on cash. The corporation puts all of that back together, but it also allows us to operate like the private sector. And I think that's going to be really important moving forward. The thing that was really important is the State Board of Education was given custody of, of the, of Permanent School Fund, but the people that were running it day to day didn't work for us. They worked for the commissioner. And what the corporation does is it essentially cures that, that governance issue. And so with that is, is that I'm going to go ahead and, and, and open it up for, for questions.
Yeah, just, go ahead. Okay. Well, just one question on House Bill 1605. So often the legislature passes laws with recommendations, unfunded mandate, if you will, with no money attached. But if I'm not mistaken, House Bill 1605 came with an allotment of about $500 million or something like that?
It's about 340 million.
340 million. Okay. So that was part of the new money that was given to public ed this session.
It is, right. And, and to be clear, this is that in, in order for that to happen, that, that there has, there's been no material that has been through that process because we are currently creating that process. And so once the legislature passes the legislation, then we have to go through the, the rulemaking process and that's where we are now.
Okay. So the money's not flowing yet, but it will, but it will. And I do want to make a correction when I said, when I referred to Maritza and I never recalling a State Board of Ed member coming in. This is your first year representing us. And in the last 10 years, I think we've had two State Board of Ed reps. We've, we've never seen him. So appreciate you coming out.
Yeah. Ken Mercer was here for a long time.
Yeah.
And then, and then there was a, there was a lady from San Marcos.
Awesome. Any other questions?
So on 1605, just to make sure we're understanding that, if you use the books that are, are, you know, the, the content that's approved there, it's an extra $40 tacked onto the basic allotment per year, per student in the district?
That's not the basic allotment. That's the instructional materials and technology allotment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does, does that equate to an extra $40 per year, per student in the district? Or is that, how does that?
Up to. It depends on what you're, well, it depends on what, what materials you're using. Okay. So it would, it would apply to those materials that you can purchase with that additional money.
Okay.
Up to $40. Right. So if, if, if you're purchasing materials that have been through that process, or if you're using open source materials and printing them yourself, up to $20 per student.
Okay. Yeah. It's, I mean, that's significant.
It is significant. And, and again, is, is that there's a lot of, I know, a lot of conspiracy theories. I know that you may find that surprising that there are conspiracy theories in, in education. But that, you know, this was, this was an attempt to, you know, for the state to take it all over, that sort of thing. And, and I think the intent was to steer a path between local control, but at the same time, creating an incentive structure for school districts to use materials that have been really vetted through that process and that we know are, are very high quality materials.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maynard.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You bet.
Richard, do you have anything else? Are you going to cover facilities or did you want? Okay. I'll, I'll come back and catch that. Sure.
Okay. So I have a whole child committee update that I will list off. There's quite a few incentives that fall under that umbrella. The meeting was November 29th. So Dr. Price reviewed special programs and goals for the 18s plus program for the community that, for the community that will, that will be housed at the Mitchell Learning Center. Annie Seider reviewed the district education, special education goals, which were developed from the Stetson and Associate which were developed from the Stetson and Associates Program Review from the fall of twenty twenty-three. The District Special Education Continuum of Services was reviewed to include the eighteen plus program and the Bear Program. An overview of community, community involvement with Believe It Bikes, Get Active Day, KC Kids and Generation Spirit was provided. Um, Kim Burney discussed, discussed section five oh four and dyslexia and the programs utilized in the district. And these consist of Lexia and Reading by Design. We have over nine hundred students with dyslexia currently in our district. Um, Jim Harmon reviewed the dis, the District Special Education Curriculum for Life Skills and Resource Programs. Um, we do have a life skills program at every campus. I just wanted to point that out, which is a huge, uh, benefit for our students and families. Uh, Marcy Warner covered the behavior supports and resources for students who struggle with classroom behavior. Uh, Lindsay Kermis covered the new system for documentation of students' IEPs and TEA reporting. And this is called Empower. Um, our future meeting date is March fifth. So, um, like I said, there's a lot of initiatives that fall under that umbrella. So thank you to our whole child committee leaders. Um, and also real quick, um, uh, for a PTO update, I noticed we have a PTO president in our audience. So welcome Kathleen Pettis to our meeting. Uh, we, Dr. Kraft met with our, uh, PTO presidents. Um, I think it was her second week and we were able to have a hundred percent participation. All the campuses were, um, were recon, were in attendance. And Dr. Kraft kind of shared what she's been doing for her first two weeks. Um, she also asked for some feedback from, from each of the leaders and they were able to share, um, kind of what their main event is for each one of their campuses. So I look forward to having those meetings with you monthly.
Thank you, Kristi. Joe?
Uh, I'd report on Facilities Committee, but I wasn't there. So I'll defer you.
Okay. I'll, I'll go over it real quick. Um, we did meet last week. First item on the agenda was to kind of talk about weather protocols. Um, a great discussion about all the preparation that had been done over the cold weekend last weekend. Um, and then, um, kudos to the transportation team, Mark especially, um, Chief of Operations on all the work that was done um, in collaboration with Dr. Kraft, um, in getting the schools back open. And so thank you for, for all that, uh, took place there. Um, kind of an update on the land acquisition of the seventy acre tract that we have under contract. Um, we were, uh, happy and sad to learn of, uh, Mr. Ramirez's impending departure from transportation. We wish you the best. We appreciate all you've done for our school district, John. Um, talked about the fire station and, uh, law enforcement center that's going to be at the Voss Middle School Campus area. Uh, Mr. Chapman, thank you for the update on that. And then the other item we talked about was bond, um, uh, construction update. And we're going to look at that just a little bit, so I won't talk about that anymore. So, um, any other questions or comments?
I have one more.
Okay.
The safety and security meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, we had that a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was a great presentation. We also had, um, our, of course, our IT gentleman come up and help us out with that as well and, and told us all of the great things that they're doing within the district to keep our computers, our kids, our data safe. Um, Rick, of course, was fantastic in updating us on what's going on within the district. Um, all I can say is we're in great hands. So thank you, gentlemen, for keeping us safe.
Thank you, Maritz. I appreciate that. Um, with that, it's my pleasure to introduce for the first time, uh, to give her superintendent report, Dr. Kristen Kraft.
Thank you, President Friar, uh, board members and members in the audience. Today begins my fourth week at the helm of Bernie ISD and I have been, uh, more amazed day after day with the caliber of our students, our staff, our community, our parents. This is an incredible district that I'm so fortunate to have the opportunity to lead. And I have met so many special people along the way and I wanted to just share just a few of those. You know, before school even started, I was out at the livestock show twice and, uh, met amazing kids and families. Met Callie Fisher, uh, junior at Bernie High School who won the grand champion for her steer. Carson Bradley, junior at Champion, who won the grand champion for her lamb. And met Gracie Thomas, Champion High School, who won the overall reserve grand champion with a beautiful, uh, fire pit or barbecue pit. It was amazing. She told me all about it. And Charlie Georgia Loos, I hope I pronounced his name correctly, at Champion, who won the overall grand champion, uh, who built a beautiful wood trestle table. It was amazing. And I think what's even, even more impressive is how they chronicled their work along the way. So every student has a binder, um, that maps out all the steps that they took as they prepared all their projects. So very impressive. Um, I was able to spend two days with our teachers and professional learning, uh, with the teaching and learning team. Uh, many of our, uh, principals and assistant principals were presenters and got to learn right alongside our teachers as they prepared to welcome our students back in the second semester of school. Uh, the, the first, my first day of school in Bernie, I toured all of our elementary schools. And the second day I was at our secondary schools, um, was able to serve lunch at Voss along with the principal there. We both had our hairnets on and, uh, served lunch out there with Mr. Vieken and his cafeteria team. Um, Fabra Elementary School, I was able to read to Ms. Rickman's class, Ms. Ornalis's class and Ms. Preliss's class. Uh, spent time at Bernie Middle School South with Ms. Underhill and, uh, Bernie Middle School North across the street with Ms. Bunker in the art class, uh, learning from her kiddos. Um, spent time with our PTO presidents. I met Janet De Spain and Sam's kids, executive committee members, and I heard all about the great work that happens there. Was able to spend time with our business leaders at the Bernie Kendall County Economic Development Leader Meeting and met, uh, all of the influential community members that make Bernie so great. It's very impressive. Bet time with our Community Leadership Academy. And around that mix, I was able to take in a girls' basketball game. Um, I went to the big, uh, rivalry game of the Bernie High Schools, uh, girls against Fredericksburg. So having played high school basketball, it kind of brought back some memories. So that was fun to be in the gym. Uh, my top three takeaways from my first few weeks here are number one, relationships matter. Number two, kids are receiving great instruction from the minute they enter the buildings. And number three, the commitment of our community is stellar and like no other I've experienced. Um, I did start my listen and learn road trip with our principals and then followed by our PTO presidents and getting lots of feedback from our teams. And I look forward to having more time with, um, campus leadership teams, uh, the PTO group, parents, uh, just all kinds of individuals throughout the district and community members and meeting, meeting them and hearing what makes Bernie so special and planning for our future. I want to end with safety and security. So my very first meeting, um, in Bernie was with our Chief of Security, Mr. Goodrich. Uh, my first day here, thank you, sir. I heard all about the impressive, um, stance that Bernie takes to make sure every school is secure. Very impressed with our SRO team. I met many of our officers, uh, my very first week. Impressed by the resources, the commitment and the partnerships with all of our, uh, community entities. And to update our board, seven of twelve Bernie campuses had intruder detection audits conducted to date. We will continue to report security findings. Uh, Bernie staff will receive training and refreshers and updates throughout the spring. The district utilizes the Texas School Safety Center Campus Audit Log to monitor compliance. System is in place to ensure all principals can verify that interior and exterior doors remain locked during instruction. An updated security checklist has, uh, been implemented at our campuses. And there's always a, a refresh when teachers come back from the second semester. And we continue to adjust and provide ongoing training for safety and security. And again, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Goodrich and the systems that he's been putting in place and the work that our leaders do and our teachers do to make sure our schools are safe. Includes my remarks.
Any questions for Dr. Kraft? Other than when do you sleep? The, the, I think it was your first week here. Um, my wife Susan and I had the opportunity to take Dr. Kraft to dinner and she was kind of giving us, giving us an update of, of all of the activities that she had going on. And I, and I looked at her and I said, you realize that you can't keep this pace, right? Um, it is okay at some point in time to say no to some of these invitations and you're not going to hurt any of our feelings. So, um, I just want to say, um, we're excited to have you. You have literally hit the ground running, um, before, before school started. It's been a pleasure to get to know you over the last several months now as we went through the interview process. Um, we know that you're still utilizing Dr. Price as your phone a friend when you need that, um, lifeline. And, but, um, you know, not, not one time have I ever doubted that we made the right decision. So we're excited to have you onboard. All right. Um, with that, there's no other comments or questions for Dr. Kraft. We'll move on to administrative services. John, are you going to introduce PASA?
Yes, sir. Uh, President Friar, members of the board, Dr. Kraft. This evening we have Stacy Tapera and Justin Zillhavy from Population and Survey Analysis, or PASA, here with us to provide our demographics update overview.
Thank you very much. It's very nice to be back. Third full study, uh, I think it's me. Six years. With me are Justin Stillhobby and Paul Rogers. Um, and Justin will speak later. Just a few minutes. Do want to, to your attention that though Justin and I are the faces that you see over and over, um, as representatives do have a full team behind us that all contribute to the study. Studies, uh, are about four months in, but, and they are very, very detailed. And the reports that you have at the DIAF, um, gives you some, some, uh, understanding of the depth, the detail that we go into. We'll be hearing a very high level summary. We won't, we won't go through all those details. First you will hear from Justin, who will talk about a lot of the, um, grounds and new housing, um, and some of the other factors that go into the projections. Future student enrollment are related.
Good evening. Good to be back. I am going to try to be brief. There's a lot going on, as everyone knows. We could probably spend an hour or two talking up here, but I won't. Everything is in your report. Um, I'll refer to it, uh, bits and pieces as we go. Um, but as we get started, I just want to kind of remind you, if you're not familiar or have forgotten what we do, um, to get to the point of enrollment projections. So we start by collecting background data. Um, what, what exactly is going on in your community? What kind of new housing developments are, are happening? We map the entire district. We have to understand, um, where we believe new housing will actually be and where it is today. And we don't just stop at what we know. Uh, we actually project forward on land that may be invested, um, that might have the potential to develop. I'll go over that a little more later. You look at your current student population, we are demographers. We have to know where people live. So we know where your students live and we look at trends in those, uh, student enrollments. Generate projections, uh, by, by planning unit. Planning units are basically pieces of your attendance boundaries. They follow neighborhoods, major roadways. They help in long range planning, which Stacy will get back to after I present. So without further ado, um, I'm going to jump right in with some regional data. When you look at the San Antonio area, um, you can see Bernie ISD is circled up there. Um, the, the red areas on this map are school districts with the highest growth over the last five years. So Bernie is number five in the metro area in growth when you look at that number, uh, from twenty seventeen. We don't have this year's data for every camp, uh, every school district. So we have to stop at twenty twenty-two. That five-year growth of over two thousand students shows you kind of where you're at metrowide.
Just one thing I was going to ask on this, had reviewed these before. I think it'd be helpful in future reports if we also had, um, the percentage change that is next to those. Just, you know, Jutson is in order of magnitude. Almost Sergeant and us, Cole Mau is about two and a half. Just helps put it in perspective.
True.
More than just the raw numbers.
True.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. So you're at over ten thousand students today. And you can see going back ten years when you were under eight. So, you know, that's, that's that growth. It's, it's, the trajectory is up. Um, recently you've seen a little bit of an uptick in development. It's, it's of course sprawling a little bit farther west and north. So to no surprise, you're increasing in enrollment. We have to look at cohorts of your enrollment though, to understand where exactly this growth is. And so we start with those lowest, uh, cohorts, which are, which is your kindergarten, your pre-K and kindergarten level. So right here we have a, a chart that shows your kindergarten enrollment. It's in the vanilla color and that red is your birth line. So we actually align those two. You have to move forward the birth data five years or move backwards the kindergarten data. And you can see your birth line continues to trek upwards. No surprise, as you gain new housing, uh, you're gaining, uh, more babies are being born in this. So your kindergarten enrollment is, uh, aligning with that quite well. But we also, as I mentioned earlier, have to understand where everyone lives. So this map is essentially all of your students geocoded to your district roadways and parcels. And so you can see here, um, we actually are showing two years in gray and in maroon. The maroon areas are new students in new housing. You can't really tell on this map because of course your district is so large. But again, all of this is in your report under chapter two. Oh, yes. So essentially on this map, maroon are new areas, uh, new housing developments. Because you can see you have students overlaid on the gray, which was two years prior. So, um, you know, it's hard to see on this map because it, it's zoomed out so much. But if we were to zoom in, I could pin, pinpoint little new developments that have occurred in the last few years. All right. So we, we code students to neighborhoods. Overall, when we look at the average of students per single family home, we get point four seven students. That's district wide. Neighborhoods can vary. You can have a neighborhood with zero students because maybe it's restricted to seniors. You can have a neighborhood with closer to one student per house, just because it's, uh, maybe marketed more toward family. Maybe it's close to an elementary school. And so every neighborhood's different, but on average you have close to point five students per home. In multifamily dwellings, that number is much lower. It's about half that number. So it's about point two seven. And that's typical. Every school district I work with is like this. Uh, multifamily tends to have more one bedroom units, of course. So you don't have as many families. But again, that can be different for every complex. So we also, we don't just look at housing, which is the majority of where your growth comes from. We have to think about what else is driving growth or decline. And we do have a few private schools expanding in the area right now. Some of them haven't broken ground yet. Um, this is all outlined in your report in chapter two. Um, the one we're watching is Saint Peters. They're planning a new campus. Um, and so a, a brand new campus right in the heart of Bernie. They're anticipating, um, between four hundred and six hundred students in grades K through eight. And it would open with grades K through five. The majority of students, of course, coming from BISD. So they are currently expecting to break ground sometime later this year with an opening in twenty twenty-five. Now that could be delayed if the funding doesn't work out. Right now that's what we're going with. So you will notice that this actually does have an impact on your, your enrollment over the next two to three years. All right. So I mentioned housing, of course, drives your growth. And when we look at housing, we look at all the neighborhoods that are developing. We look at land that might develop. Think about where utilities are located. For instance, the San Antonio Water System supplies water to the southeastern portion of this district. So we have to understand who is applying, um, to actually have SAWs service them. We have to think about where, um, the Kindle West utilities are located and how many connections they have. That's a big water service provider here as well. We talk to the cities such as the city of Bernie to understand where plating and permitting activity is ongoing. And of course, we also talk with a lot of developers. So for instance, one of your largest developments, Esperanza, we have to understand what they're planning. So when we look at housing, we also think about the economy. We know what the big news on that has been over the last two years, uh, mortgage rates increasing. And so with rates increasing, for every one percent increase, we get about a two hundred dollar increase in a monthly payment. It has had an impact, but we have had, uh, a need for housing. So that top chart there shows you the month's inventory in San Antonio. So how many months would it take to sell all the houses on the market? You can see two years ago it was below two months and a balanced market is considered six. Since mortgage rates have risen, that market has actually increased. The balanced market, we're, we're getting closer to that six month, uh, number. We're over four now. So that just means, um, it's taking a little bit longer to sell homes. In some very mature districts, we've actually noticed that it's had a little bit of an impact on enrollment. Because people aren't moving. They're not leaving those homes where they have a two percent mortgage. Here you have enough housing growth to keep that momentum though. We're not noticing that. So let's jump right in. There are over a hundred and eighty individual developments or pieces of land we've projected future housing and future students on. These are your top five over the next ten years. So Esperanza, it's ongoing. We're projecting over fourteen hundred units. That's not including another five hundred that are reserved for seniors. So we have to think about that. We know there's a section at Toll Brothers is building for seniors. Corley Farms, where your newest elementary is located, just broke ground. At the time when we actually put the data together three months ago, there were no homes occupied. I'm not sure if there are any today. I don't think so yet. Yes, yeah. Yeah, so we, we saw those coming in at the time. So we've projected forward. You will start seeing new students there, and especially with an elementary school located there should be favorable. Riera Ranch has a couple of new sections, of course. The eastern section is ongoing. There's another 380 acres that is planned off Clubs Drive for new houses. Ranches at Creekside, this development stalled a bit, right off 46. And so that is actually a reason why your projections were a little bit lower, or sorry, your enrollment was a little bit lower than we had projected, believe it or not. This development is, is gearing up again. And so the engineering issues they had are somewhat over. And then a very new development, George's Ranch, east of the city of Bernie, off 46, currently has the water line being extended out to it. So we expect that development to get going in the next year or so as well. These are just show, this map just shows you where these top developments are located. A lot of them I just spoke about. And of course, all of this is in detail in chapter three of the report. You can see it's kind of scattered out everywhere, really located in the central part of the district. When we take our focus to multifamily, I have a couple of things to say about that. One, about 25% of all of our housing projections are multifamily developments. We have quite a bit going on right now, and we've projected forward as well. We've also had to consider a newer housing phenomenon called build-to-rent. You have one of those actually being built currently near Esperanza, across 46 from Sybalo Creek. 214 build-to-rent units are projected in the next five years. What build-to-rent is, is they often look like single-family homes, but they're all rentals. Most every housing developer and builder are now in the build-to-rent business as well. So about 1.6% of all your single-family housing in the next five years is build-to-rent. It's not a lot. I have some districts that have closer to 10% now. So these are all of your apartments and your build-to-rent communities that are either currently leasing up, which are shown in tan. You have four of them, believe it or not. That's very high. You have two under construction, and we have a few more that we're planning, especially in the Lemon Creek Development, where the new HEB will be going. There's a couple of multifamily developments planned around that area as well. So that'll be our focus in the next few years as those start coming online. All right, when we tally all of this up, we're projecting almost 20,000 new homes to be occupied in this district over the next decade. That can be anything from a single-family home, which is almost 2/3 of that number, a multifamily home, which is about almost 5,000 over the next 10 years. There's almost 1,000 age-restricted houses that we're projecting, and most of that's in Esperanza. And a little bit build-to-rent there shown. But anyway, it all tallies up to almost 20,000. And you can see how that looks annually. We start this chart this year. You can see it's a smaller number, but it, it quickly rises. You have a lot of developments in their infancy. So for instance, Corley Farms, believe it or not, Esperanza to me is in its infancy. And there's still thousands of homes to be built there. So we're looking at about 500 to 700 single-family homes per year in the next year or two, rising quite rapidly over the next five to six years to over 1,500 single-family homes. And then on top of that are your multifamily. All right, so how does this all relate to student projects? We think of, everything I've been mentioning factors in. It's not just new housing, right? So we have to look at the kindergarten population. We think about births. We move and age these students forward. We also look at the existing population. Are there neighborhoods that are actually gaining students? Are there neighborhoods that are losing students? People are aging in place. So all that is looked at a very granular level. We think about those private schools that I mentioned, St. Peters. And then of course, we look at new housing. So in the next couple of years, there should be anywhere between 300 and 500 new students from new housing annually, increasing as the 10-year period goes on. So we put all of this together. It's not that simple, but we do it. But I also wanted to mention, I'm sorry, before I get to our actual enrollment projections, what's somewhat changed? I mentioned a lot of this already. We did have a little bit of a lower kindergarten enrollment this year than anticipated. We saw a couple of developments stall, as I mentioned, Ranches at Creekside, Miraloma stalled a little bit. Those are getting going again. And of course, we had this new private school pop up that we did not know about two to three years ago. So all of these have been factored into our projections. We're a little bit lower than we thought we would be where we are today. So you can see on the left, those blue bars are our projections. So we had a low growth of 11,200. We're under that today. So, you know, if you, you're worried about high growth, that's good news. But we're still anticipating the growth to continue, a little bit slower in the short term because of all these reasons about. So there's that, that moderate growth bar. It's missing, or you can't see the low and high growth, but I'll get to that in a second. But that moderate growth bar, the dotted line, is what I want you to follow. It's our most likely, based on what we know today. And so we're anticipating your growth to increase from your nearly 11,000 students to over 17,000 students by 2033. So what are those low and high-growth scenarios? Well, a lot goes into thinking about it, but it's, it's, when you really look at it, it's quite simple. A lower-growth scenario could mean, well, we just don't gain as many kindergarten students as anticipated. For whatever reason, fewer births, because students, students born today are only going to, we are only going to see them show up in the data five years from now. Well, we project 10 years out, so we don't know what's going to happen with that. You might see fewer houses built, maybe interest rates increase, something that might surprise us, but it could happen, I guess. We might have more private and charter schools get built in the area that actually take away more students. Higher-growth scenario, closer to 19,000 students in 10 years, could be because of accelerated growth in older neighborhoods. Perhaps interest rates drop back down to those historic lows that we saw two years ago, and we just see more new houses. Maybe we have a surprise development that we don't know about today that gets going in the next three to five years, and it's very popular. All of those reasons can, can attribute to a higher or a lower growth. But please, we ask you to follow the moderate growth because we actually model that based on our knowledge today. So Stacy's going to get into that. We use our moderate-growth scenario to project your campus enrollments. And I'm not going to talk anymore. I'll let her go at, go at it now.
You've heard a lot about district-wide numbers, but what matters for specific planning for specific schools is where that growth is going to happen. So all of those factors that Justin talked about have all been rolled into a model of how many students are projected to live each planning unit each year for the next years. This map illustrates as a, it's a hotspot map where the highest growth is projected to happen over the next 10 years. Familitively, over 10 years, those red areas, red planning units, are where the most elementary students are projected to, to live. Also represent and correlate with the new housing that Justin talked about, Corley Farms. But when those students, those high-growth areas, when those students show up at the school, which schools are they going to attend? So the green outlines represent the elementary attendant zones and show you which schools each of these hotspots are located in. And the one thing that is, that is unusual about this district is that this growth is spread out. It's distributed well among all of the elementary schools. So you see some hotspots of growth at Kendall and Fabra and Van, and Sybalo Creek and Hurst. And so that helps with, with sort of planning so that you don't overcrowd one school immediately. How does this roll up, aggregate, sum up to how many students in each school? So the, the growth that we project over 10 years is highest at Kendall. Almost 900 more students are projected to live in the current Kendall Attendance Zone than do right now. That's followed by Fabra with about 665 student growth. With all of this growth, how does that relate to the current capacities? So which schools can handle this growth and how long? That's the next question. So this table illustrates the projected number of resident students to live in each elementary attendance zone for the next 10 years. The yellow highlights represent the years in which those schools are projected to reach 100 or exceed 100% utilization. And the orange highlights represent 120% of capacity. And we, as an independent consultant, use 120% threshold as just a marker of which it's really difficult for a school to accommodate the student population even with portable temporary buildings, et cetera.
Well, just, and I know you'll, you'll mention this, but this does, this lists our seven current schools, doesn't list Viola Wilson, which will relieve a lot of Kendall and Van Rob.
That'll be next.
Okay.
So, so the, yes, the orange represents 120% of capacity. And so the first step, of course, in accommodating this growth is the opening of Viola Wilson in next fall. So that will, as Mr. Sena mentioned, be the first step in relieving both the current overcrowding and the projected growth in that central southern part of the district. I told you that that's, that's where much of the growth is focused, especially in the short term. And then clearly, an elementary number nine is going to be needed later in the projection period as well, based on all of those orange boxes. So at the middle school level, where is that growth concentrated? Growth is still spread out, but the middle school attendant zones are shaped such that most of the growth is projected in Bernie North and Bernie South. And that is aggregated up to about 862 students projected to be gained in the Bernie South Attendance Zone over the next 10 years, followed by Bernie North with 567 students gained. Now, if we consider the new capacity that is planned for Bernie North and South, that the capacity that the district has currently and planned is enough to accommodate the short term for the middle school students. Long-term relief, as you can see with yellow and orange highlights, is projected to be needed both at the North and the South. So a middle school number three is projected to be needed within this decade in order to relieve both Bernie North. And at the high school level, again, this heat map of growth is distributed among Bernie High School and Champion High School. About 1/3 of that growth is, is focused in Bernie and about 1/3. And that translates into about 1,300 new high school students projected in Champion over the next decade. So again, with the planned expansions, the new, the new capacity at Bernie North and South, I'm sorry, at Champion and Bernie High School. The projected utilization at Champion is going to be the one driving, because of those extra 1,300, 1,400 students, I just told you, that will drive the need for additional high schools. And so the timing of a potential third high school will be impacted by these numbers, but also driven largely by other non-demographic factors, like how many is too many in the, in the high school? How, what are the local tolerances for overcrowding? And opening the school early enough that you still have space in the existing schools to grandfather the old students, whatever grandfathering policy you decide. Financial considerations like election and results, and so forth. And also concurrent project. And it's important to include all of them. So overall, I've told you that our projected growth is lower than had been projected previously. That opening of Viola Wilson Elementary will be the first step. And then elementary number nine, middle school number four, high school number three, will likely be needed within this next decade. With that, I can give you questions. And Justin?
Pardon me, right when I put in a mint. But if you have one, just a comment, I think if you go back to the slide, a comment and a couple of questions. If you go back to the slide that shows the, how much the forecast was under? I think you did yourself a little bit of a disservice there on that one, because just looking back since y'all have been on board, because that makes it look like this huge gap, because it is, right? 10, 9, and 11, 4. But from what I saw, your, your forecasts are pretty consistent. They've just been biased by about 500 to 600 each year, which I'm willing to chalk up to COVID, the county had negative, negative population growth. But that gets me into, I, I don't see much on the methodology. Do y'all do internally or publish anything on how well-calibrated your models are? Anything like that? You see rock curves? Because I just, we plan all these, and particularly at the aggregate level, you've been pretty consistent, a little biased, but pretty consistent. At the individual feeder pattern level, there's been a lot more variability. And considering how important these are for us to plan on, I just don't have any measure of confidence and statistical confidence. I don't want to make it sound like I don't have confidence. I don't know how much weight to put in these forecasts without some type of methodology or some type of information on calibration. So didn't know if that's anything that y'all provide.
Of course, we look at it all the time. And, and we can provide some numbers for you if, if you're looking for specific numbers. Overall, certainly the first year and two and three are the most accurate. In the first year and two, we are typically with, with most of our district, within about 1% of, and that, in fact, it's less than 1%. Big outstanding things like them excluded from that. Another important point that I'd like to make is that while these numbers change as far as projections versus the actual enrollment, part of the reason of showing this slide is to talk about when we make a, when we do a study, we take all of the information that's available at the time and make projections based on what we believe to be the most likely scenario situation.
How, how likely? Because that, that's what I'm missing, right? So I know you believe it, but I'm looking for some type of statistical backing for, for your forecasts, right? Otherwise, it's just, I can believe that you believe it, but we make really, really expensive decisions based off that. And particularly at the feeder pattern level, there's been a lot of variability in that. And y'all have done a great job of coming back and readjusting the numbers in the model. But to me, that's, that's akin to, we got, you got the test back and the teacher lets you regrade it, you know, redo it to get up to a 70. So what I'm just looking for, and there might be, I don't know if you have white paper or anything in general, just on a little more background on your models and any type of confidence, statistical confidence you have in those. For example, even your low, medium, high, I'm not sure, like, is that an IQR off a, you know, off a model that you have, a 25, 50, 75? I just, it's really hard to interpret the numbers and put much to them if, if really what we're left with is, we put a lot into this and we really believe it. And I know y'all have math behind it, but I'm just asking to peek behind the curtain without, without any trade secrets, and that might not be a thing for open discussion as well.
I mean, Joe, I, I think the, when you look at by zone, because you're looking at a macro and a micro level, when you're looking at it in an elementary zone, what really comes in handy is the number of vacant developed lots. How many of those vacant developed lots have sold in the prior year? You know, the city of Bernie will tell you that a, that a healthy subdivision sells 50 homes a year. Well, when you look at Esperanza's projections, it's way more than that. Now, they're investing a lot more than any other development traditionally the city in Bernie invests. So logic would tell you, you're not going to have just 50 homes, you'll have more. But I, I think that data is important. And I think we all know that after two or three years, the accuracy goes down exponentially, you know, and we're not.
And it means that we were off starting in the first year.
Right. And we're not going to, we're not going to. And we're not going to, we're not going to build schools or go out for a bond based on a 10-year projection. We'll, we'll do it much closer to the actual need. You know, when, when it's, like, for instance, in Kendall, when you drive through the Kendall Zone, it's not just Corley Farms, it's Fox Farms, it's, well, South Glen is pretty much finished. You look at the apartments that are coming in, Lemon Creek, Napa Oaks, which feeds into Van Robbe. You look at those areas, and you say, what's going to close in the next two years? And you get a really good idea. You know, with our multifamily housing, there's a couple of very big developments being built in the Van Robb Zone that are far, far from renting out all their units. So that tells us in the next two years, when they fully run out, we're going to gain a lot of kids. And some of our apartments will, will be at .3 kids. Some luxury apartments will be at .14 kids per household. So, I mean, we really do, we have to drill down into, into this, into the planning unit. What I like about what you have here is, is the planning unit. And it, it may be accurate for a 10-year projection, it may not be. Frankly, I'm really glad that the projection for the next 10 years is lower than it was when the last report was done two years ago, because that was growth almost, quite frankly, at an unsustainable, not an unmanageable level. But what we would have to do to manage that, I don't even want to think about. This number is a much more manageable number. So we just got to study this stuff, and whatever questions we have.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of studying it, not to drag this out forever, but the number is the important part. What I'm asking is how much confidence we can have in the numbers? And I just don't see methodology in here, just like I would in almost anything else I'd look at to back up the forecast. I'm sure it's there, maybe that's something we could schedule that would require in, in closed session. But for example, being within 1% can sound very accurate, but if we just take the average growth rate for the area, which is 6%, and use that as our model starting three years ago, we would have been much closer than this. So I, I just like to understand a little more what the methodology is, because we do base a lot of decisions off that. That's my only request.
And I share, I share your concerns, because driving through subdivisions that are active subdivisions, it was pretty clear a year and a half ago, that, two years ago, that the ranches at Creekside was way behind what they were projecting they were going to sell. All you got to do is drive through the neighborhood. Now you drive through the neighborhood and you see a couple hundred homes with utilities, they're getting ready to build. They're already building houses in that new wing section. So we just, we need to, this, these, this is great data, but we need to add a whole lot of local oversight to make sure we have accurate projections.
I agree with that. Thank y'all very much, probably.
Other questions or comments?
I have one question. When you talk about prospective future, you contact landowners, do you not? Something that our family's never going to sell. And you call them up and you find out, well, mom and dad are 93, and son and daughter really kind of want to sell. What do you find out in your due diligence process?
There's a lot that goes into that. It's not necessarily always cold calling people. Sometimes it is. Often you hear it from various sources. You can find out through a land broker, for instance. You can find out through other real estate professionals, or maybe somebody's looking to sell. And so, yes, when you find that out, you start actually, we can, we can put a heavier weight essentially on that tract of land and project more students or more housing growth over the long term. We also have to think, well, is the development, could there actually be development on that property? You know, is it near a water line? It's not just, you know, oh, yes, they want to sell, but can it develop? So we have to ask ourselves all of those questions. But yes, we do. We look at all of that, find out who's sold land recently. Often, yes, a patriarch or a matriarch dies, and the children don't want to carry on that tradition of owning that. And they sell. Areas like this, you see that all the time. You also note, note that some people are never going to sell. We, we hear that all the time. Oh, yeah, they ain't selling. As long as they're living, they're not.
I remember in your first report about four years ago, four or five years ago, you projected a 400-acre tract, 350-acre tract near Esperanza that it would be sold. Well, what do you know, within two years, it was sold. Now, it's not going to be developed until Esperanza fills up, because it's the same developer that's developing Esperanza. But here's another 350 acres that's going to be houses. And they're projecting something like 800 houses, that the average person in Bernie has no idea, because, you know, it just hasn't been publicized, I guess.
And we often, we often will fill those projections in in the latter part of the projection. We'll start something later.
Well, the other thing is, is if you go back a decade, there was rarely any growth in our enrollment from snapshot date at the end of October and the end of the school year. Now, we routinely gain anywhere from 50 to 80 kids. It doesn't seem like a lot, but it's an extra half percent to percent growth. And the only reason, we're at 10,009.75 right now, I think. The only reason we're not higher is we've already graduated, Ricky, what, 30 kids from, from the academy? Or else we'd have been over 11,000. We'll probably graduate another 30 or 40 or 50 before the end of the school year. So if another 40 kids move into these apartments or whatever, and 40 more graduate, so we'll probably finish the year 50, 60 kids above the snapshot figure, which now is becoming routine for our district, which never was the case a decade ago, because we have so many, so many things under development that, you know, a lot of options.
I think it would, I think it'd be interesting to see, you know, I assume you guys are using like some sort of coefficient for each development that happens? How fast those lots are going to get taken down and built out? So for instance, like on a, you know, on a development that's got more workforce housing with house prices that are kind of towards the median of the county, you know, it's probably fair to expect that if there's 500 lots there, that all 500 of those have houses on them in a couple of years, and they're all built. You know, some of the, the, you know, for instance, the developments with like a million-dollar median household, you know, or cost of a house, those might go 40 or 50 years, and they might still have empty lots in that development, you know? I mean, we've got, we've got developments that are like that. I think that'd be interesting to see, just kind of how y'all do that. You've kind of done it here on page 30, where, you know, you say there's going to be this many units in Esperanza, and of that 1,418 are going to be occupied, you know? But just kind of to Joe's point about the, and it might be in here, I think Appendix Two, you are showing us some of that, those numbers.
Appendix Three, there's an entire table, I want to say it's 12 pages. It's going to outline every single development or piece of land we project students. Going to see by year how many homes we project. Can be very nuanced. You know, each developer is different. Some are slow, some are fast. So, you know, that's, no math to that. I know everyone wants it. There's no magic number. You often have to just talk to, talk to different developers, understand what they've done historically, what's in the pipeline today. In an area like yours, it can be very nuanced. You have large lot developments that are just slower to build. You have quick growth, like Polte and Syntex, that's going to be faster. So anyway, that's all outlined in that table in the Appendix Three. We also, of course, in that same table, show you our projection of students per unit. Those ratios of students per occupied unit I talked about. Well, we transferred that, that knowledge, and we actually put that as a projection. So every neighborhood's different. So all of that's in that table.
Yeah, I would think that'd be one of the hardest parts of this, is, one, knowing what's coming, because you don't, you can't see into the future. But then, how fast does, do the houses actually get built on those lots? It's nuanced.
It is. And I think ranches at Creekside is a great example of how something you do two or three years ago doesn't come to fruition because of an, you know, unforeseen problem with the development. From what I understand, the engineers either left, or there was some sort of engineering issue with the development, and they basically stalled for a year. We'd have never known that. It's one of your highest student yields. I think at the time, they had about .9 students per home. So that was where we were projecting quite a few kids.
You know, the other thing, a lot of times developers, well, they'll give you a robust estimate of how many homes they're going to build, and they're smoking something, quite frankly. You could look at, and I'll give you, well, I don't know that I want to name the specific development, but there's a really high-end development.
Please don't, don't do that.
There's a really high-end development that's very, very nice, that estimated 100 a year. But when you look at the price point, you look at the cost of developing with the topography of this development, there's no way on God's green earth they're going to be doing 100 houses a year. You're lucky if they do 40 or 50. So the number they say, oh, we're going to do this, baloney, you know? And whereas a Corley Farms, when you're talking 350, $360,000 homes, and I know that range, because my daughter and her husband just bought a $319,000 home that really should have been 360 right here in Bernie. I mean, those homes will sell because people can afford it. So I, I think the whole vacant developed lots is, is that'll, we really need to drill down into that to have a better idea of what kind of churn we're going to get in homes in, in the area. Because, I mean, I share your concern, 350, yeah, interest rates went up, and you could see there's a direct correlation in this presentation. Births went down a little bit after COVID, and move-ins went down correspondingly. So there were less people moving to Bernie. Well, why? Well, interest rates were 7.5%, 7.34%. Can't afford to buy a house. They can't afford, they can't sell their house in San Antonio, and they can't afford to move here. So they're waiting for rates to come down. Now they're coming down. So 25 will probably be a pretty, 24 will be okay, 25? If rates continue, we should be a big growth year. We'll see. We'll see.
Any other final questions? All right. Stacy, Justin, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And we'll move on to Mr. Stahl, bond update.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Kraft. My name is Mark Stahl. I'm the chief operations officer. And although I will be presenting to you tonight, I cannot take credit, full credit for this presentation. I'd like to recognize Ramiro Guerrero in the back. He's the director of construction. She's not with us tonight, but Liliana Jamie, she is my administrative assistant. She is also our bond bookkeeper. And then I'd like to thank the leadership of the district, of course. Your, your collaboration's been instrumental, not only at the central office level, but at the campuses. So without further ado, I would like to make one comment. I was just listening, you know, listening to Passa's report. I am testimony that building something in Bernie isn't as simple as it used to be. This is an accurate rendering of the front of Viola Wilson Elementary School. Roughly 100,000 square feet. Includes collaborative areas in each learning pod, two flex rooms, and a library. It's the first school in Bernie ISD named after a former educator and named after a female. It's the first school in Bernie to be built on the opposite side of I-10. Features an outdoor amphitheater style area, which allows for outdoor learning events and more. So these are some pictures, recent pictures taken last week of Viola Wilson Elementary and its progress. We're currently tracking about 40%. As you can see, the structure is up. They're working on completing the roof and drying it in. I'm here to tell you, once they dry in a facility, you will see a lot more workers on site. The infrastructure and the outside work, it's hard work, the site development, but the worker bees really start showing up when they can get inside the building. The second picture, you can see, of course, they're working on our electrical infrastructure. And then the last picture, that is the library slash gym area. We'll have a dividing partition door there. This is our aquatic learning center. It'll feature a state-of-the-art competition merthah pool. We'll have a standalone athletic room, athletic locker rooms, along with the coach's office, and have a dedicated pump station that will be on controls for monitoring. We're tracking about 25% completion for this project. Of course, we're working on the excavation, as you can see in the picture. We're installing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure, and we have approved the submittals not only for the building, but for the pool. This is Bernie High School. This is a classroom addition. We're about 52% with this project right now. Total of 19,600 square feet. Includes six multi-use academic classrooms, two science lab classrooms, two nursing lab classrooms. Then at Bernie High School, we also have the tennis court lighting. Champion High School got this upgrade as well. Of course, many of you know, those tennis courts didn't have lighting for at-night competition. They now do. That project is substantially complete. We're in the second phase of our stadium upgrade. Much of you know, we did the turf over the summer before football season. Right now, we are working on the track resurfacing and the bleachers. If you've been to Bernie High School lately, you'll notice that the large wooden bleachers that used to be on the visitor's side, they are gone. And of course, we have the Bernie High School courtyard project. We're targeting summer 2020, 2024 to start and complete that project. I have an asterisk at the bottom. When we started designing this project, we found out that the fire alarm and PA system could no longer be expanded. It had, had reached its maximum potential, and we also needed to upgrade that system to meet current code. So we added that feature to the overall scope of the project. That's not just for the addition, that's for the entire campus. Champion High School, this is a classroom addition focusing around pathways and technology. Roughly 38,000 square feet, 10 general classrooms, four computer labs, four large collaborative instruction spaces. Then again, we have the tennis courts at Bernie High School. They received the lighting upgrade as well. Excuse me, Champion High School. Then we have an HVAC deferred maintenance project here. Talk about bond, a lot of people don't think about infrastructure. When you replace a rooftop unit or a chiller, even a split system, they can be rather expensive. So it is part of our bond project. Those are long lead time items. So we've worked out, as soon as they come in, even if school's in session, we will develop a process for installing those units right away. That's predominantly over their office area at Champion High. And then, of course, we had the fire alarm and PA replacement this campus that we discovered designed the addition. These are other infrastructure projects, air filtration, fire alarms, and PA systems. We have the air filtration at the nurses' offices. If you remember, a result from COVID, we wanted a dedicated air supply for the nurses' stations, so their, their areas would be safe, clean environments. They wouldn't, you wouldn't have the threat of cross-contamination from other areas of the school. And that also includes scrubbers for each one of those. And that also includes scrubbers for each one of those, uh, nurse stations. When I say scrubbers, they take in the air, they scrub it and they eject clean. Yeah, fire alarm, complete replacements. That's at Bernie Middle School North and Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary. We're hoping to be finished with those projects here in Mark. Fire alarm front end replacements, that's not the whole system throughout the school. That's when you walk into the office and you see that big panel. That is a front end replacement. We're replacing those at Siblo Creek Elementary and Carrington Elementary. And P A, P A system replacements, most of these, when you look at them, they're predominantly our legacy campuses. I don't think we have a school on there that's younger than twenty years old. That's Bernie Middle School North, Bernie Middle School South, Siblo Creek, Carrington, Fair Oaks and Kendall are getting complete P A replacements. Again, we're tracking substantial completion by the end of March. Please forgive me for forgetting George and Bedalia Mitchell Learning Center. That's right next door. That's our old central office. Uh, we're tracking about forty completion there. Uh, you can see the outside rendering of what that will look like once it's complete. And then we have some current, uh, construction, uh, pictures from last week. That hallway on the bottom is the main corridor that goes down the center of the. Total square feet is about fifteen thousand two hundred square feet. The academy will include six regular classrooms and two collaborative areas. We'll have the eighteen plus program there as well with three classroom. One includes a bedroom and a small learning area. And then they will share a shared flex space, prep catering area and two outdoor learning areas.
Mark, I, I think it's important to mention the bedroom is not for sleeping. It's for training, the over eighteen housekeeping hotel work, correct?
Yes, sir. Basic life skills type instruction. Uh, this is one of those projects that was not initially part of the bond, uh, when it was passed. But you know, when you have bond funds, sometimes you, uh, recognize vulnerabilities. This is something our former superintendent, Dr. Thomas Price came to us with. We found an opportunity here at central office, uh, backed by our training rooms where we really needed to add another secure vestibule, much like we have at the front of the school. Um, we worked with Fluger, uh, the same architect on our elementary school, Viola Wilson Elementary. And that, that project is complete and functional. Safety and security. So we worked district wide to identify opportunities to harden our infrastructure in the form of camera, card readers, door alarm upgrades. Uh, we're about ninety-five percent complete with that. Uh, we still have a couple of areas that we need to complete with our consultant. We also rekeyed, uh, our, some of our schools. We rekeyed Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary completely. Uh, it was on a old keyway. Uh, so we went in there, we replaced all the hardware in that school and we replaced, uh, where it was under one key. That also included Bernie High School, Champion, and I believe part of N- North. So we were under two keyways. Now this district is under one keyway. So if you have the master key, which not a lot of people should have, potentially you could get into all of our schools with just one key. And that goes a long way for helping us secure our schools. Then we also have the security upgrades, uh, the window film and the fencing, uh, based off the most, uh, current T E A mandates. Uh, we worked with the safety and security consultant. And that, that, uh, contract is getting signed with the contractor. We anticipate that work starting within the next couple of weeks.
I was going to say, one thing I really like that we do about access control and keys, which is effectively, you know, nobody gets a key unless you have a justified need for it, deny offer them by exception. And that, you know, probably most people don't know, that applies to us. Like, we get our little IDs. I can't even open that door to go to the bathroom. I have to get somebody to, to open it for me. And I just really like that we've taken that, that kind of approach on every door, who, who actually has a justified reason. Cause at the end of the day, school board member really doesn't have a justified reason for being able to, being able to get inside a door. We don't work here. Um, so I just really appreciate the, the, especially the exterior and interior doors, work that's been going on.
Thank you. And finally, we allotted, uh, pretty brilliant. I wasn't part of the bond, uh, planning. I came to basically get the bond projects off the ground and get them rolling, but it was really pretty brilliant. That when they pass this bond, they basically allotted a certain amount of money to each campus, uh, went to the principals and administrators and said, okay, come to us, identify your needs. And so that's what this is. This is the minor construction projects at each campus. Uh, we started over Thanksgiving. Uh, we're about eighty-five percent complete and our target is to finish over spring break. Bernie Middle School North, these next two projects I'm going to show you are in the design phase. I'd like to point out that all the projects that you've seen before this are actually in construction. Uh, it's about seventy-five percent of our bond in construction right now. So that's pretty impressive in itself. So this is, uh, the projected addition for Bernie Middle School North. Overall project complete, oh, I'm sorry. That shows the addition. I'm going to talk about the parking first. Uh, we have the parking lot behind the rock, Rock House, behind Bernie Middle School North Football Field. That's about, uh, sixty-five percent complete. We hope to be finished by the end of the school year. And we have the HVAC deferred maintenance. I touched on that earlier with Champion. Uh, we have the same situation here at North. As soon as social units come in, we will actively replace them. And then the Bernie Middle School North addition, addition that I mentioned previously, it's under design. Uh, we're working with Alamo Architects. Roughly eight thousand square feet. It's new construction. It's about a thousand square feet of it is renovation as it pertains to the auditorium and the foyer. Then we, uh, it includes, uh, six classrooms and a small collaborative, collaborative space. Bernie Middle School South. It's roughly ten thousand, eleven thousand square feet, ten thousand seven sixty-six classrooms and two art classrooms. And then, uh, we have the library hub upgrades at our four elementary legacy campuses. Uh, they represent about seven point two million dollars combined. Uh, that includes Carrington Elementary, uh, Siblo Creek, Kendall and Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary. And we have some renderings of those libraries on the slide. This is our, just some additional two, uh, second year projects that are in the design phase. Uh, district furniture upgrades, as you know, that's already bed out. You've awarded it at a previous, uh, board meeting. Uh, the furniture, uh, replacements will start rolling in this summer. It will be a very active summer for us. Uh, we have the elementary playground and rubberized surfaces at all of our elementary campuses. And then we have the, uh, C H S tennis court French drain, uh, project. We found out that we had some issues with water, um, upheaving from the soil, uh, creating issues on our playing surface. Uh, so we designed a French drain system with a barrier, uh, with our consultant M T R. And that project has, uh, started this past week. And of course, uh, Senator Campbell was here earlier and honored for her assistance, uh, without, with getting us out of the permit issue with SAWs. And this, uh, we have the Viola Wilson Tree mitigation project associated with that elementary school. And last and not least, I'd like to thank our communications department, uh, Mr. Eric Armenta. If you don't know, he's a licensed drone pilot and he takes excellent footage. Thank you. Any questions?
No, just, just a comment. Thanks, Mark, for a, a comprehensive update. I, I do think it's worth, um, uh, just reviewing that, that, uh, Viola Wilson Elementary is about twenty-one, twenty-two percent of the overall bond. And that came in on budget. And when you compare that school to other elementary schools being built in neighboring districts, whether it's Medina Valley, North Side, like Travis, Georgetown, we're anywhere from six to ten million, twelve million dollars under. And it's going to be a perfectly nice facility. So I think a lot of good work went into design work and just managing the taxpayers' money. Um, it's appreciated. I mean, I, we, we had a one hundred and sixty-five million dollar bond and we're a growing district. And Alma Heights, which is not a growing district, passed a bond more than double our bond. And I'm trying to figure, what are they spending money on? You know? But, so I appreciate a team that can get quality at, at a reasonable price relatively speaking.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mark, excuse me, um, all of these bond updates are on the district website, right?
Yes, sir. We also send a campus newsletter out to our administrators, uh, every week.
I was just thinking from a, from a public standpoint, being able to see the progress of the bonds, you might, I think it's important to, to just know that we do keep that updated and certainly out there.
It's definitely been a lot of work. I, I think when people look at bonds and you think about the planning, uh, you don't, uh, think about some of those unfore- unforeseen scenarios you might run across. I'll use, uh, Bernie High School as an example. Uh, Bernie High School was built in seventy-two. Uh, there's a lot of infrastructure, um, under the ground. Uh, we found a, uh, electrical main, uh, under the ground that we didn't know was there and the city didn't know was there. And we also found aving, uh, aging infrastructure in, in the form of a clay, uh, sewer line that hasn't been used for some years. So, uh, we were able to attack that with our consultants and, and handle it within the project. So it's definitely a lot of work and we've been able to, uh, address other issues too.
I was just curi-, I was just curious quickly, not through every campus, but what are some of the minor construction projects that the campuses are deciding on with those funds?
Jessica's, uh, the one that reached out. She reaches out. So you want to tell them about?
Okay.
A lot of it's just, uh, maintenance, like painting, uh, Champion, I'll use that for example in their office. So we're replacing some blinds and some flooring. So, uh, we have a, a great maintenance department, but sometimes they're limited by what they can do. But we're tackling, we're tackling a lot of that.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Impress, Mark, it's impressive that there's seventy percent. Did you say if the bond is already in kind of seventy five? Wow, that's impressive. And just what is it, uh, timeframe wise, since we had the bond passed? A little, little for a year, year and a half? Wow, fantastic. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to action items and we have business, Mr. Scott.
You got a joke prepared for us, Wes?
No jokes tonight. We'll, we'll break in, uh, Dr. Kraft slowly. Uh, good evening, everybody. You've, uh, been provided the results of operations for, uh, the period July one, thirty-one of this year. Uh, in board update in December, you also received, uh, the same report thirty. If you have any questions on the November report, I can try to answer those tonight. My comments will come to the December report. Um, I don't have any comments on the judiciary comparison schedule tonight. Uh, item focused, the budget number number two, where we took, uh, uh, some, some one-time costs in, in, uh, instruction and, and, uh, general, general administration, maintenance, technology and transit, that safety. Also had some, uh, one-time costs that we needed to, uh, take care of in general administration itself. Effect of those changes was a two hundred and seventy-five million dollars to the, uh, general funding expenditures. Uh, we also had a budget amendment to the debt service. Uh, that budget amendment is for the remarketing portion, the November bond. Would, uh, bond that thirty-two million dollars bonds, that would stop. Issue, shoot new debt that, uh, the net of seventeen zero. Budget add the defecence and the bond issuance costs associated. Since it's a net zero.
Wes, um, I, I know we all understand that, but I want to make sure the audience, whoever's ever watching online understands that with this defecence this year, we will have paid off close to two thirds of what was sold in August of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, forty-five million was sold and we paid off about twenty-eight million of it. That's, uh, unusual for that kind of payoff. And of course, we sold another sixty-five million this year. The final fifty-five million will be sold next year. I know we'll take a nice big bite out of that next year. So I, I think we're, we're doing, uh, with the lowest tax rate. Many of the seventeen fast growth districts in the Austin, San Antonio area, we have the lowest tax rate. We, we will have paid off within two and a half years. Uh, over twenty-five percent of, of total cost, you know?
The, uh, the donations report, uh, has, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand donations. Uh, the biggest, uh, items in there would be the, uh, the education foundation distribution and, uh, annual, uh, branch trust, uh, for scholarships. Those are the two biggest ones, but we certainly appreciate every, every dollar, every good, every service, every hour donated. The tax collections report, uh, shows, uh, we started talking about, uh, tax collections in November. Uh, as the result of October, if you remember, we were about five percent. There he was, uh, our interest rates. Holding on to their money instead of taking advantage of a discount. Uh, we saw in, that, that, uh, a little half percent less than prior year. Two percent, the thought that, uh, at the time we get to the end of January, that, uh, there'll be much we caught up. Uh, though I am aware that, uh, I can't continue to, to pay with. So there might be a little bit longer. Small percentage. Uh, with that, questions about, uh, budget. It's off.
Friday. I have no questions this month.
Whoa.
Cause you did such a great job at the finance committee meeting. The only thing I want to point out is that, um, eighty-two percent, eighty-two percent of the tax levy has been collected. So that means that eighty-two percent of the folks are getting a discount, whether it's one percent, two percent or three percent. And it's worth reminding folks, we're one of only thirty school districts in the state that offers an early payment discount. That's, that's a good thing. Our taxpayers are going to save two point four million dollars this year because of this program.
I will, um, just. Okay, I have a motion in a second, but I do have a quick comment, um, before I call for the vote. the vote. One is I want to recognize the CB and Anita Branch Trust. So that has been a donation to the district for a number of years. CB, CB Branch was CEO of Dow Chemical originally, passed away a long time ago. Anita just passed away last year, I believe. And so for that to be continuing is a testament to their commitment to education in our, in our district. So I think that's, that's worthy of recognizing. And then I want to just reiterate, you know, we talked about these budget amendments we're getting ready to vote on. Although there's a deficit budget presented, this is primarily one-time expenses related to the surplus from last year. So almost exclusively. So it is, it's changing the calendar year or changing the, the budget cycle year, but certainly not overspending on the funds that we've received. So with that, if there's any other questions or comments, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, we have approved it. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Last item on the agenda is future business items. So next month's meeting, we will talk about progress monitoring report, taper district report and annual hearing on taper report. And then we'll have a special ed and 504 report. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second, all those in favor. We are adjourned at 9:20.